Good evening. It's 6:00, and I'm calling to order the Placerville Planning Commission regular meeting Tuesday, August 19, 2025. Please join me in the reciting this pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I need you to please call the roll.
Good evening.
Here.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Here.
Vice Chair Lepper?
Here.
Commissioner Stratton?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Chair Keeney?
Here. We have no closed session report tonight, so we'll move on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, be enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote, or unless any member of the commission or staff or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. And on our consent calendar tonight is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, July 15. Would any commissioners like to pull the minutes?
I have one question on the minutes.
You have a question. So we'll pull the minutes for discussion. That will move on to number five, items pulled from consent calendar. So I'll let you start, Ms. Lepper.
Yeah, so I just noticed on number 10, under environmental assessment hearings, that the -- I am listed as making the motion, but the seconded person is not listed, and I apologize. I try -- I meant to go look it up, but I didn't really remember until I looked at my notes here. So I don't know who seconded it, but it is not listed in the minutes.
I remember we had a motion and a second, and I don't have my notes from the last meeting.
I apologize. I'm not looking.
Do either of you remember?
No.
I don't.
Huh.
Yeah.
I have a vague recollection that I seconded that, but I -- that's kind of strange. I typically chair -- typically doesn't make the motion or second. I just don't recall. We'll have to look that up. So how do we handle that, Ms. Kendrick?
We could bring the minutes back to your next meeting, or we could take a brief break and look that up. I can't play a video right.
Yeah. I'm so sorry. I really meant to look at it, and I totally forgot until I pulled my notes out right now. Yeah. We could just postpone them, probably.
Can we postpone it to, like, to our next meeting?
Yes.
And have -- come back with a correction?
Yes.
Okay. Would any member of the public like to talk about the item? Good evening. If you would, state your name for the record.
Good evening. Michael Drobish. I guess if this is coming back, I can speak to it then, but might as well get this. I would like the record to show that at the last meeting, July 15, 2025, I tried to speak to item 13.2, and Chair Keeney would not allow me to. So I just need that to be part of the public record. Thank you.
Right. That caused quite a bit of confusion since the matter had been pulled, and we had already gone through, let's see, where is that, number six? Items pulled from -- no, items of interest to the public, non-agenda items. So rather than open up number seven, and since the item had been pulled, we did not take public comment. The item is back on our agenda tonight, so I hope you feel comfortable, and we'll share your thoughts with us on that topic this evening. So I apologize. It was a bit of confusion. This has been a matter that's been standing. All the documents that were under discussion have been part of the public record for six months. But, you know, my lack of expertise in this, I didn't realize that we had to once again actually post it on the agenda. So lesson learned, and we're moving forward. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience like to comment on the item that was pulled, which are the meeting minutes from July 15? Okay. Then, let's see. Let's close the -- oh, any other commissioners have a comment?
About the minutes?
Right. That's what's under discussion right now. No? Okay. Then, we will -- do we have to have a vote on this, or is it just -- okay, so we'll take a vote, just general consent on postponing this until our next meeting? Do we have a date certain?
September 2.
September 2. So move this item to September 2. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. So we'll bring that back on 9/25 to approve the corrected minutes. Number six is items of interest to the public and public comment, the non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda, and the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. State law prohibits the commission from acting on items not listed on the agenda, except by special action of the planning commission under specified circumstances. So at this time, would any members of the public like to comment on non-agenda items?
Good evening again. I just want to share a tale of what happened. I looked up the -- this meeting, went to the city website, looked up the agenda, and I just happened -- so anyway, what happened was, I saw there was no posted agenda, as state law requires. Wow, that's kind of odd. What happened, I guess, was, the city posted the agenda like on Friday. There was something wrong, some broken links, so they took it down. During that downtime is when I clicked on it and started thinking, you know, this is a violation. And then, we finally figured it out this afternoon, that that's what happened. And then the new links were put back up, and everything's okay. But it's just a tale that could be passed on to council, is that they -- I think they need more staff. It's a -- it was a snafu, and just hopefully it doesn't happen again. But it kind of was going to be a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that -- IT problems. And I actually noticed the same thing. You and I accessed the same website at the interval when staff was repairing the broken links within the agenda. You know, that's a -- all the links, all the information in those links was available on the webpage, the general webpage for the city. So all the information was available. The only thing that had been taken down at that moment was the agenda. But the agenda was posted down at City Hall, and so staff is working on that. I spoke with Director Kendrick about that, and yeah, they're working really hard. They're not sure what happened. But I'll give you a, you know, if you'd like to kind of summarize where we are with that, hopefully we've got IT help and we
Sure. Thanks, Chair.
can resolve the problem.
We did post here at Town Hall and at City Hall on Friday, when the agenda was posted online. We were notified by a resident on Saturday morning that the links within the agenda weren't -- were not functioning. Deena provided directions on, you know, where the links, because they're all right below the agenda that has the clickable links that weren't functioning. So we were able to help that customer. On Monday morning, when we got in, we were aware that other people were having problems with the links. So we did take down the agenda briefly to work on those links. We still had problems. We actually reloaded the entire agenda, still had problems. We had IT involved, and Rachel from the city manager's office involved, not quite sure. It was some kind of technology issue. And then, we noticed this morning that we're still having problems with the links. So we're looking at ways to improve on that process, or maybe change the process, but also verifying that all those links are functional when it gets posted. And I did check with Regina, our city clerk. By law, the agenda is required to be posted on our city's website, because we do have a website. However, it doesn't nullify that it was up and taken down briefly to repair the broken links. So we can still continue on with tonight's meeting, at the pleasure of the planning commission, but we're definitely working on making sure that this doesn't happen again. It was, I think, frustrating for all involved, and I can definitely let you know that staff and I were extremely frustrated.
I know you're working diligently on it. I was traveling. I was not able to get the physical packet. And so, yeah, fortunately, everything on the website, all the information, the staff reports, all the attachments were there to be viewed. And so all of that was working. It's just the convenience of looking at the agenda and clicking the hyperlink. So you have my sympathies. Good luck. I know you're working hard, and you're already a little short-staffed, but hopefully we can get that resolved. Anybody else have a comment about that? Okay. Any other public comment on non-agenda items? Okay. Let's move on to number seven, written communications on non-agenda items. We have none, as far as I know. Thank you. So let's move on to item eight, presentations in educational workshop sessions. We have a lot of new information, a lot of CEQA reform going on up the state. So I'll turn this, 8.1 and 2, or do you -- let's start 8.1 in case people have comments about the presentation. But this is really just a informational workshop session.
That is correct, Chair. I did want to ask, we do have a public meeting item with members of the public to discuss that. And if it's the pleasure of the commission, could we reorganize the agenda to take the item that has the applicants present and reorder this to after agenda item 9.1?
I don't know if we
So have it after 9.1, before we move on to 10 or 11?
I'd move to do that, to make a modification.
We've done this in the past. So we have a motion to move item eight to after 9?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Smith, I don't think they recorded your vote. Could you please throw on your mic?
Aye.
Okay. So that's a unanimous vote. So all right. So we'll come back to item eight, and we'll move on to number nine, in deference to those present here to discuss our environmental assessment public hearing regarding the master sign plan amendment, MSP 25-5, for the Arco at 151 Main Street. I'll turn this over to you again, Ms. Kendrick, for the staff report.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the planning commission. Carol Kendrick, Development Services Director. And I'm here to present case file MSP 25-02, a master sign plan for 151 Main Street. And I do appreciate the commission reordering the agenda. I know that assembly bills and Senate bills are riveting information that everybody loves to hear about, but I'm sure the applicant appreciates it. The applicant of the project is Michelle Richmond of Perry Builders, Inc., on behalf of the property owner Mohammed Satar. They propose a master sign plan to rebrand the existing Shell gas station and convenience store to Arco on a .48 acre parcel zone central business district located at 151 Main Street. The site is established -- it was established in 1965 under a conditional use permit, 65-01. It does include a 2,300 square feet convenience store, five fuel pumps, and a 2,420 square foot canopy. The 2009 site plan, 08-05, expanded the store and upgraded exterior features, including a relocated monument sign. The master sign plan proposes retaining and refacing existing signage totaling 199.59 square feet, and adding new signage of 16.63 square feet for a combined total of 216.22 square feet. Signage includes rebranding the pole sign with the Arco logo and an internally illuminated with warm white LEDs, a new double-sided monument sign that is 8.315 square feet per side with the Arco logo and internally illuminated LED illumination, two canopy signs, each 20 square feet, rebranded and externally illuminated, and one existing wall sign, up to 20 square feet, rebranded with external gooseneck lighting. The plan includes a design template for the moderated Arco colors and sans-suret fonces, ensuring uniformity and allows for future modifications subject to administrative review. The site is fully developed with curb gutter sot and sidewalk improvements. It's surrounded by commercial uses, including the Tap House, Century 21, Buttercup Pantry, and Hangtown Creek to the west. The proposal does not comply with Chapter 10-4-17 of the side ordinance as 200 square feet aggregate for all wall signs, and all total signage is exceeded with the new proposal. The new addition to the monument sign would be the new Propel, which is adding the 16-plus square feet. The master sign plan for 151 Main Street, as outlined in the case file, provides a mechanism to allow for a variance from the standard sign requirements outlined in the Placerville sign ordinance. While the proposed signage includes the existing pole, new monument sign, existing monument sign, canopy signs, and wall signs, it generally complies with size, placement, and illumination standards. The master sign plan enables flexibility to deviate from these requirements where justified, such as accommodating the rebranding of a formula business like Arco, or addressing site-specific visibility needs along Main Street under Section 10-4-17H. The planning commission may approve such variances as part of the master sign plan, provided that the plan ensures a cohesive design, maintains aesthetic compatibility with the central business district, and meets public safety and general plan objectives subject to administrative review. The project does qualify for a CEQA exemption under Section 15331 for accessory structures. So tonight, the planning commission has three options. They can approve the master sign plan 25-002 submitted, subject to the conditions that all signage conformed to the master sign plan. Future signs undergo administrative review, and lighting complies with our lighting ordinance and a sign permit is obtained. Or you can deny the master sign plan if the commission finds it's inconsistent with the sign ordinance or general plan requiring the applicant to revise the plan or provide additional justification. Or you can modify and approve with modifications, such as reducing sign square footage, adjusting the monument sign size, or altering illumination standards with conditions tailored to address commission concerns. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and we do have the applicant in the audience.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your summary of the existing and then the proposed approximately 10 percent, a little bit less than 10 percent increase in the total coverage of the square footage. I don't have any questions. Do any commissioners have questions for the staff about the report?
Just to note that a couple of the directional indicators of the surrounding properties are not correct, like in the -- on page four, in the table, it says the Tap House is to the north, but it's to the east. Century 21 is to the west, not the south. Buttercup is to the south, not the east, and Hangtown Creek is to the north, not the west. And that's reiterated on page three, too. Okay, good. I just wanted to call attention to it to make sure. I don't think we need to do anything, right, but just
We can note that as a housekeeping item, and I -- so the problem I've been having is on Gottenet, it doesn't have a north arrow, and so I have just been thinking, north is that way.
Yeah, I know. I get it. I totally get it. I just wanted to note it for, yeah, for, like you said, housekeeping to
Came to my attention today, so
Okay, great.
I talked with staff.
Yeah, on page three and four.
Yes.
That was my only note.
Okay. So if there are no further comments or questions about the staff report, I'd like to ask, is Mr. Satar here? Good evening. At this time, we'd like you to come to the podium, and if you'd like to say anything else about the application.
Good evening.
I don't know if any commissioners have questions, but this time, if you'd like to present that or add anything to your application, please do so.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We really appreciate, you know, everyone's cooperation in this. We've been working quite long on this process. I think the only one hurdle that I see that probably, they say the white Propel sign is -- has a little break between Arco and Propel. So that's my -- I don't know if they counted that extra. Once the -- Arco's requirement was that that Propel sign cannot be attached with the sign that is right now currently. Unfortunately, I don't have the photos to share. So they wanted to have away from that Arco sign. So that's why it is a little on the side.
The requirement from Arco is to have the Propel sign separate from anything that says Arco?
Yes. The price signs, they do not want to be attached with that Arco price signs. So that's why we had to move a little
So that's -- and that's shown in your application. Let's see, what
The additional 16-foot
Right. So that's on page nine of 13. I think this proposed picture shows, actually, what this, in your application, I don't know if you have a copy with you, but there's a price sign, a blank, a price sign, and then the Propel sign?
Yes.
So what goes in the middle that's shown blank? Is that then the Arco branding in the middle? Thank you, Ms. Kendrick.
Yeah, on the next page, it shows this middle would be. I know, it's blanked out on that page, but on the next page, this shows the breakdown of those ones.
Arco.
Yes.
Yeah, it's -- Arco logo goes in the center.
The Arco would be in that sense. So what, unfortunately, what, you know, the proposed shows it's blank, but that's where -- okay. So what we see then on the next page would go in that middle section?
Yes.
Other than that, you know, I think the look of the Arco branding is nice. It's clean. The -- it conforms to all the requirements of ours, lighting, and so on. So I think that's -- that's well done. Does anyone else have a question?
Is that non-negotiable with Arco? It is not an option to have the Propel sign included in the single sign?
Yes, that is not an option. As their branding, I don't know, there's a requirement that we cannot have Arco. We need to improve that. I mean, we have done, spent a lot of money on this site, and if you recall, seven, eight years back, it was a very small station. Now, we made it very nice, very appealing to the customer. Now, we need to change the canopy with a new canopy and new MPDs. So I mean, we need some oil companies' support in that. So that's what we're leaning towards, Arco, to get that.
So the canopy signage contributes to the total, of which only 200 square feet are allowed. You -- can you reduce the size of those on the canopy? Is that also required, certain size required by Arco?
They have standard sizes, but I can check with them that, but this is in the variance that, I mean, it's, that's what I was told, that is allowed.
Well, you know, quite frankly, I feel like there's plenty of signage. I think that the public can find this location. They recognize that it, you know, it is a gas station. They can see the prices and so on. And it would be my preference to keep your total square footage to the 200 square feet that's allowed, particularly given the fact that you are inheriting and using the pole sign, which I'm sure you've learned from staff, that's something that the city is trying to, you know, as those fall out of use, we're trying to, you know, improve the aesthetic of our town. So you're inheriting that, and that's part of your total. So that helps draw, especially the traveling public on the highway, to see your location and lead them there. So would, I would like you to consider reducing the size of the cash prices for the Arco products, so that you could fit in, so that I understand now that the Propel sign has to be separate from the Arco products, but I'd like to see it fit all on the existing, if you would, base that has the -- has the current prices and has the Propel sign, you know, that -- and then it would all have the new clean look, kind of look, you know, for your new gas station. That, do you think that's possible? So respecting their desire, Arco's desire to keep it separate, but then reduce the size of all of it, so that you come closer to that 200 square foot?
But is the canopy lighting that those are counted for in this one, if we can reduce some of the canopy side lights, maybe, you know, that
So the canopy, on the gas canopy, that's where you have some ability to reduce the square footage that you're proposing?
Yeah, that's what Mike
My name is Mike. I'm also one of the owners.
Hi.
Most of these
Could you step up to the mic? I'm hard of hearing.
Most of these signs are already pre-designed. So it's either going to be too big or too small. They're not custom fabricated. If they go lower, it may not fit on the canopy. And I understand the concept of reducing total to 200, but if you just look at one item, for example, just the price sign, if you want to reduce it only 10%, it may not fit in that cabinet. So then you have to take out the whole cabinet and then find a whole new system to make it fit. So it's easier to say when you're saying 10% reduction, but when you're looking at one piece-by-piece item, it doesn't make sense to reduce it, so it will still fit on the canopy, or on the sign, or in the monument, because most of those templates are pre-made.
So what I'm hearing is that there is no, Arco won't allow you to reduce the size of the signs?
It's not that they won't allow, but I don't think they make different sizes to choose from on the canopy. I don't know if it
I don't have too much of an issue with the canopy. I have a question more about visibility relating to this additional Propel sign
Right.
to Highway 49. So I'm in the same thought. I would like to know if there is some way, even so, in the current, with the Shell, it's got its kind of own sign, and then the Propel. If there was a small space between those two signs, would that be acceptable to Arco?
To make the new signage fit just as it does
The Propel is still on the current monument base with, say, I don't know what their -- so the Propel sign that you're proposing is not very far away from their
Yes.
three standard ones. Is there a way to reduce the cash Arco debit credit sign on the monument to fit the Propel sign with a little gap that satisfies their requirement that doesn't add this additional right sign? Because my concern there is visibility between when you're turning there and the cars there. And so you can see in the proposed picture that it eliminates your visibility of seeing there, in addition to going over the amount. And so my question would be, would Arco allow you, what would be the minimum gap they'd allow you to have to call it a separation between the Arco information and the Propel sign?
I think what I have seen at other locations, in our case, they have a cash and a debit separate. Maybe they can make one template where they have cash and debit on one, and reduce the total size of that, and then they can bring in the And then they can bring in the propel closer. I believe the reason why Arco doesn't want to put propel next to them, because they don't want to advertise that as part of Arco item, it's a third-party vendor. So they want to keep that distinguished. But I believe we could probably see if the cash and debit can go on one slide, and then instead of the three Arco slides, we could just narrow it to two and then make it a little bit smaller.
Yeah, I think that would solve the problem of having the additional signage, like I said, that reduces the visibility there, goes over the amount, but still satisfies your requirement in Arco. Yes?
One comment that I have, once we do that on one cabinet, cash and credit, that might increase the height a little bit. So that's will be acceptable.
The height is not, at least me personally, the height is not as concerning to me as the addition to the right of the cabinet, because honestly, if you raised it up a little bit on there, it's not going to impact visibility. You're going to... You can't see more of the... Or, you know, you don't need to see more of, say, the box truck that's in the background or the car there. It's already blocked, which most cars are already blocked there. So if it had to go up in height, I would see that as being a more reasonable, like, variance out of the allowable amount and rather than having a whole additional right-side sign on there. Is that something that you could research or do you have?
Yes, we can follow up with the engineer and with Arco on this question.
And possibly reduce the size of the propel. Again, we're... I'm looking to keep this closer to the 200 square foot. You know, I appreciate that, you know, you have to keep the two things separate. But if we could get it closer to what is existing, but still have it look cohesive, I think that's also what I like about the design that you're proposing. It's, you know, the Shell obviously added this later on, and it... Hopefully, your design will make it look more integrated, yet keeping the two products separate. And I agree. I think, you know, if you needed to go a little taller to get the public to see the advertising, the Arco label, that might be acceptable. I think I would like to see the updated design, though. How do the rest of you feel? So Amy and I have expressed our concerns about this. Did you have anything else to add about that before I...
No, just that I'm in favor of not adding the additional propel, the additional monument sign to the right and finding out how we can fit all of their requirements within the standing monument base that is there.
And the other thing, when you look at, you know, the landscaping needs, you need to have a little bit more room. There's nothing planted where the new propel sign is proposed. But, you know, that obviously was a planting bed at one time and would look nicer if it could be maintained. And from the proposed picture, it just looks like it's crowded into that designated island. So that's another thing that caught my eye about the look. It just seems very crowded. Other commissioners have comments about that or ideas?
I don't have anything to add. I think that your suggestions are the same as what I was thinking. And I think that, I mean, it looks to me like the existing view varies, is like very similar to what is being proposed as far as the changes go. So something more in alignment with that. But the rest of the signage looks really nice. Overall, the design is very nice.
Any other comments or questions to the applicant?
I'm in concurrence with the comments that you guys have shared. I think that's, tends to be a very visually busy area, and we have a historic aesthetic to maintain with that. So I'm not in favor of adding square footage where possible. I do agree, I think going vertically could help. I would say maybe we want to set like a maximum that they could bring back to Arco, or is that not helpful?
I don't know.
I think probably seeing what the design could be and seeing... Again, I think if it's reasonable, I don't think the height, I don't think it's going to be 20 more feet high. So if they can design something that fits on that monument base, if it needs to go up a little bit, maybe for size clarity, you know, then I think that's reasonable. But to fit all three, the cash, the debit, and the Arco, I'm sorry, all four, and the propel on that monument base, I would like to see that as the...
I guess the question I have for you, Mr. Satar, is about the color scheme. These are black and white photographs. So when I looked on one page described as the notes two of two, it's got 35-plus descriptions of various pink colors, and it's things like Benjamin Moore Elephant Tusk, and then there's Benjamin Moore Desert Twilight. And I looked at the internet to see what Arco signs are like, and I saw various color combinations. So if you could just give us some idea about the color scheme. It's royal blue and red or white? I'm confused.
I'm so sorry, they did not submit that color planogram, but I did not have, I don't have a copy in front of me. But I can provide, can drop off the color set later on, maybe during the week or, you know, for your review.
It would help for me if I knew what the colors were, because I see there's different options out there. Arco in some places uses black and different colors.
In this case, I believe it's mostly blue and white with a hint of red in some Arco. Mostly blue and white.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you so much. Please take a seat. We're going to open it up to comments from the public right now?
Thank you.
Thank you. About the... So as part of the public hearing, we'd like to take comments from the public about this proposed Maester Sign Plan Amendment for the Shell Station going to an Arco Station. All right. We don't have any comments from the public? Oh, we... Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Kathy Lishman Plaschow, for resident. You can't miss this gas station. You can't miss seeing it anywhere around that area. And 200 square feet, limiting it to 200 square feet seems very reasonable. It's too bad they can't make the pole sign shorter. I mean, there's a lot to see there, and clutter is not good. It's hard to believe that Arco has a one-size-fits-all, that every gas station everywhere has the same signage. And the concern about the canopy signs is valid. Color photos being brought to you of the final renderings of the signs would be very helpful. The Planning Commission, I believe, can say no, can say to just reduce it to 200 feet, and they can figure out how the best way to do that is.
Thank you.
Hello. Yeah, I heard the staff report mention our downtown, kind of like a ban on formula's business, formula business. You know, it doesn't really matter what the corporation says. We make signs this size. Take it or leave it. Well, leave it. You don't... You conform to Placerville. You know, we don't allow formula business in our downtown historic district corridor to do whatever they want. So I would like to see you tell them you shall do X, Y, and Z. With the monument sign, they're allowed 10-foot in height, I think 32 square feet per side. If... They can't have it all. They can't have the giant Arco in the center of the cash credit sign and all over the canopy and on a pole sign. They can't... I don't think you should grant them the overage on the square footage of signage. You should say, make it fit. Otherwise, they need a variance. Am I correct? They would, to get an overage on square footage of sign, they need a variance, and I didn't see that listed, so don't know. And I think you should probably continue it, because you need to start requiring applicants to come to you with a complete application. That means color renderings. You need to know what this is going to look like in our special space down here. And to get black and white photos of a color palette is insane. Let's see, what else? I was thinking to get rid of the pole sign, but not everyone uses GPS. And with the caboose and the tall trees right there, they almost really do need a pole sign for those that aren't driving and using their phone at the same time. So that's just it, is make them conform to Placerville. Doesn't really matter what corporate wants. I think with the monument sign, they remove the Arco, large Arco center. They can make a small horizontal Arco on top, squeeze the cash and credit, and put the propel next to that, and they'll meet almost the existing size that it's there now. So just some thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to comment on this proposal? Okay, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. I'd like to ask staff about the formula business issue. So this is in our central business district. It is currently a formula business, and it's really a rebranding of an existing use. Do you have a comment or any clarification for that?
Again, it's not the, it's not the use. It's just a rebranding. So I would probably have to look into that further. We did have some other comments related to this item. So for the signage, talking about putting the cash and credit together, there are requirements with the Department of Ways and Measures on how big those numbers need to be so staff can do further research and find out what the minimum requirement is and provide that. And also to add, the foundation that is there now was constructed to support that sign. So with adding more weight on top, that's something that would have to be looked at, and that foundation may not be sufficient for adding signage on top, but that's something that would need to be explored by the applicant.
Okay, thank you. What I'd like to see is, let's, that we could continue this. I think, you know, the applicant is here, has heard our concerns and concerns of the public as well, to minimize this, to keep within the 200-square-foot square footage that's allowed, closer to what's there to existing, and to provide the least samples, if we can't get a rendering, but at least samples of the colors that are proposed so that, you know, if nothing else, we just kind of key them to the various aspects. Color renderings, of course, would be preferred, but I realize that that's kind of expensive, but we do need to see what the color, final color palette would look like. And then just overall, look at the new design and make sure that we're in conformance with these other restrictions. I hadn't thought about extra weight on the existing pedestal. And, you know, I hesitate to actually dictate what we want to see. You've heard possibilities, suggestions, and then you have to work with Arco on what's allowed and what can be done on that side. So rather than, at this point, restrict it too much, you know, give some leeway, see what you can come back with. So that's my suggestion. How do the rest of you feel?
I had one question for Carol. Andrew Painter used to say when he was in your shoes that if a building on Main Street is within 300 feet of an historic marker, like the Bell Tower, then the historic guidelines had to apply. I haven't heard that in a long time. And the last time I heard him use it was with reference to the property that's right next door, the property that's owned by the Putoff Waldron family, and that's the, was a brew pub. And their argument was, well, we're about ready to open, and we can't bother to go through the guidelines, et cetera, et cetera. But at least that was his argument, and I don't know what the merits are of that.
That's something that staff can certainly look into when the item comes back.
And I guess the other thing I'd share is that I'm always reluctant to have a merchant come back another time. But I would feel much more comfortable when we have color renderings, number one, something more exacting. And I really wouldn't feel comfortable expanding the amount of signage or making it any larger than what it's been in the past. One of the things that Patty Borelli used to say is that people just don't need signs quite the way they used to. They're going to look at their cell phone and be able to find out exactly where to find Arco or Shell or whatever. But that's just another consideration to throw in the hopper.
Okay. Oh, I'd entertain a motion, perhaps for a continuance?
I will make a motion. Do we need a date certain or...
So that's really going to depend on the applicant and their ability to work with Arco on revisions and then work with their sign, their sign contractor to look at that, and also if they did want to add height, is looking at the foundation.
Okay.
So I...
Just a motion to continue?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to continue this item for the applicant to be able to bring it back with the updates that we have discussed today.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll, or call the vote, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Stratten?
Aye.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Is there a 10-day appeal on a continuance?
No.
No? Okay. So that's 5-0. Thank you for coming down, taking time to talk with us, answer our questions, and hear our concerns as well as the concerns of members of the public. I wish you good luck in your redesign. Look forward to it coming back. Overall, I think the design is fine for Arco. Arco tends to have a nice, clean look, so I think it's just a case of rebranding a longstanding gasoline station in our community. So thank you very much. All right. As we reordered our agenda, we'll move back to item eight, Presentations and Educational Workshop Sessions. So we'll go to 8.1, Assembly Bill 52 and Senate Bill 18. Summary from you, Ms. Kendrick, please.
Thank you, Chair and Commission Members. Carol Kendrick, Development Services Director. Tonight, under item 8.1, we have a staff memorandum providing a concise summary of California Assembly Bill 52, AB 52, and Senate Bill SB 18, tribal consultation requirements. This purpose, the purpose of this memo is to inform the commission's approach to land use and planning project reviews, ensuring we comply with state law while respecting tribal sovereignty. This is an informational item, and no action is required from the commission this evening. Senate Bill 18 was enacted in 2004, and it mandates local governments, including cities, to consult with the California Native American tribes during the adoption or amendment of general plans or specific plans. The goal is to protect traditional tribal cultural places. Key requirements include applicability to the general plan or specific plan adoptions or amendments, involvement of federally recognized and non-federally recognized California Native American tribes listed by the Native American Heritage Commission, also the NHC, within our jurisdiction and affected by the proposed plan. The process involves contacting tribes using the NHC contact list before adopting or amending plans, engaging in collaborative consultation to seek mutually agreeable resolutions for preserving or mitigating impacts to cultural places, and ensuring consultation occurs early in the planning process for meaningful tribal input. The timeline gives tribes 90 days to respond to a consultation request with possible mutual extensions. The outcome focuses on identifying and protecting tribal cultural places such as sites, features, or landscapes significant to the tribes through avoidance or mitigation measures. It's important to note that SB 18 consultation is separate from CEQA and emphasizes long-term planning rather than specific development requirements. Onto Assembly Bill 52. It was enacted in 2014, and it integrates tribal... It was enacted in 2014, and it integrates tribal consultation directly into the SEQA process for all development projects, ensuring tribal cultural resources, or TCRs, that are considered and protected. Some of the key requirements that it applies to all projects subject to SEQA, such as those requiring environmental review. It involves California Native American tribes traditionally and culturally affiliated with the project area that have requested formal notification from the lead agency. TCRs are defined as sites, features, places, cultural landscapes, sacred places, or objects with cultural value to the California Native American tribe. These could be listed or eligible for listing in the California Register of Historical Resources or a local register or determined significant by the lead agency based on substantial evidence and tribal input. The process includes tribes requesting notification in writing from the lead agency, the lead agency notifying tribes within 14 days of deeming a project application complete. Tribes have 30 days to respond to this request for consultation, and consultation beginning within 30 days of the tribe's request and occurring before the release of the SEQA documents, such as an EIR or a MND. It's a good faith effort to agree on avoiding or mitigating impacts to TCRs. Documentation is crucial. Lead agencies must report of all efforts, including correspondence, meetings, and mitigation discussions. Confidential tribal information can be protected in a sealed appendix, and the outcome emphasizes meaningful consultation with reciprocal communication, consideration of tribal expertise, and documented decisions on mitigation. Failure to consult adequately can invalidate SEQA approvals as illustrated in the recent case of the Coin Nation of Northern California versus the City of Clear Lake, 2025. Please note that AB 52 is distinct from SB 18 as it targets SEQA-governed projects, not just plan updates. Additionally, AB 1561 from 2020 extended tribal response times by 30 days for certain housing, housing projects completed between March 4, 2020, and December 31, 2021. In conclusion, compliance with both SB 18 and AB 52 is essential for protecting tribal cultural resources and places while upholding tribal sovereignty. By engaging tribes early, documenting consultations thoroughly, and prioritizing meaningful, meaningful dialogue, the Planning Commission can ensure we meet state requirements and build relationships with the California Native American tribes. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And I did want to add that with the Thompson House, you did see how we did document in the staff report our consultation with a local tribe, and so you'll start seeing this more frequently.
Thank you very much. I had one question toward the end of your report about AB 1561. So that was for projects between March 4, 2020, and December 31, 2021. That's no longer enforced then? That was just something they did possibly during COVID to extend? Give a little more time for comment? Okay, thank you. Any questions about the staff report or any of the, either of these bills?
Yes, Carol, I just want to know about the last part. You said that, if I, if I heard correctly, and I'm never, never sure that I do, that a tribe had been consulted, is that right?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I believe it's one of the last things you said was about a tribe having been consulted?
Yes.
Which one was that?
It was the Miwok, Shingle Springs Miwok.
Okay, because there's, there's two Miwok tribes locally, among other tribes, but that's the only one that was notified?
No, no, we notified, we received the list from the NAHC, and so we sent that out to all of them, and I believe it was 22 or 20. It was in the 20s, so we sent it out to-
That's impressive.
Several tribes. In other jurisdictions, sometimes we'd have to send out 32, and they're all, they all have to go certified mail, so it's, it's a process.
That's very helpful. The other thing is, I believe you talked about documents being kept confidential, the tribe being able to preserve records. Is that right?
Right, so in the planning world, there are only two things that are confidential, and that is attorney-client privileged communications and cultural resources reports that identify where cultural resources are located. Those are kept confidential because the public doesn't need to know where these resources are and, you know, have potential damage or theft. And so those are confidential. Those are the only two things that are confidential in a planning application.
Now, was, was that guidance, that standard in effect prior to these adoptions of both laws?
That I don't know.
Okay.
I, I, I believe so, because-
That's been a part of, you know, tribal consultations ever since, yeah, that I've known about them. Catherine, you may have some practical experience. Have you done any tribal consultations within your work as a consultant with your, any of your?
Well, I've handled it through the SEQA process under AB 52. It's something that's undertaken by the, the lead agency, though. So as a consultant, I could only facilitate it and document the results.
So prior to laws, I do remember I was working in jurisdiction where we kept all the cultural resources reports law, in a locked file just so that they didn't inadvertently, you know, get, you know, when someone comes in to look at a file. So we would keep those separate, and that was prior to SB 18 and AB 52. And in, in my experience, so with the tribal consultation, it's government to government. And when we've used consultants in my path, in my previous jurisdictions, typically the tribes do not want to work with those consultants. They want it to be a true government to government meeting and consultation.
Here's why I ask. Up on Broadway, there was a tribal village that I knew about for roughly 70 years. And in respect to tribe wishes, never talked about it widely for just the reasons you described. Because what happens, as I've heard representative of the Maydou, the, the other tribes say, is then people come in and they damage the sites. But what I saw in that village, when I looked at it, were large galvanized tubs filled with pestles. I mean, these were enormous containers. And what was fascinating to me to discover is on that grinding stone, because I had one as a kid, they're, they're different, different depths. And it's because you come in and you'd have one that was very deep for pounding them up acorns initially, and then progressively it gets smaller and smaller, and you have small pestles. Those are all gone. And some of the other landmarks of that village are damaged. So I don't know what would be protected about that report because it's already known where the location is. It's, it's been widely distributed.
Well, what we're talking about tonight is a governmental California agency and their requirements for consultations with our Native American tribes. You know, local knowledge, you know, it sounds like a fascinating site, but you, you weren't acting on behalf of the city. You were a private citizen when you learned about that. So what we're talking about tonight, Mr. Smith, is-
Asking about the question that you described-
Senate bill and its implications for-
It's asking for your information about the access, when, the access to a cultural resources report. Has that standard changed in any way?
Anything that, that indicates the location of a TCR is, is not public information.
Thank you.
Would anyone, anyone have other comments about the requirements for consultation under these two bills? And I'd like to open it up to the public to comment on the staff report and the summary provided for AB 52 and SB 18.
I just wanted to add how important it is to send out these notices as soon as possible and to also, during construction projects, require, when the city grants a project, to have that project superintendent, you know, have a flash call when they find something because some people might not know. But when the city overtook rebuilding the Upper Broadway and a parcel outside of the project area, outside of the SEQA analysis, suddenly the contractors up there ripping up the ground, and they destroyed several Indian grinding rocks. They shouldn't have been on that property, it was outside the project area boundaries. So stuff like that happens, and we need to make sure that when it does, everyone gets notified, stop.
Well, that's, you know, as far as I understand the AB 52, when I worked as a consultant, you know, those, those were the restrictions. And I think what the two of you are discussing is, you know, I don't know the specifics of that. I wasn't a consultant on that project, nor did I work for the city. But if, if that is indeed what happened, you know, that is unfortunate mistake. And, you know, we definitely have to learn from that. And if damage did occur, the city, you know, has to take, and did take in that instance, steps for remediation for damage.
I guess what I'd want to know is how rapid can you notify the tribes on a finding during a construction project? If you have to mail them a certified letter, that's lost time. Are you allowed to-
You know, I don't know the, I don't remember the specifics. It's in AB 52, and I'm sure that the, all these projects, when you have a concern, you've consulted with the tribes. Usually the tribes send out their own representative when there's any groundbreaking so that in the event something is found. At least that's why, in my professional experience, there was always a monitor there along with the construction operator, and they would discuss sites. They'd go in and take a look, you know, give an all-clear if it was fine for them to move ahead. You know, I've, I've heard, I had the, it was a really interesting experience working with this one representative from a tribe, but not, not in our area, it was north of here. But he told me a lot of stories about things that they, actions that they would take in the moment when something was discovered. And, you know, he assured me, he said that we're not talking about, what was his analogy? Arrowheads. He said, I, I don't need to know about arrowheads. You know, he's talking about things that are much more significant, including human remains. That was the most interesting case that I had heard of. I just wanted to share that with you since you have some experience and interest.
Yeah, I'm just hoping that going forward, the, the city, you know, does the right thing and doesn't start digging outside of the project.
Absolutely. This is, this is critical. Would anyone else like to comment on the staff report? Ms. Kendrick?
Just for clarification, so for the AB 52 process, that's for a planning application and entitlement. So when we do the tribal consultation with the Native American tribe, they can ask us to incorporate mitigation. And typically what I've seen in the past is they have monitors that are out there when there's any ground disturbing, and it's a condition of approval and a mitigation measure. So they are notified, the, the tribes are notified as soon as we get an application in that's complete enough to send out. So, I mean, Thompson House, again, that was sent out before it went to Planning Commission. We've got a new project in that we're going to be sending out. We've actually sent out to the NAHC. The NAHC will give us an automatic response saying they're behind, and it'll take four to six weeks to get a list. For Thompson House, we got it in a week. So it, it's just kind of hit or miss, but we definitely engage in the AB 52 and SB 18 very early in the process because there are timelines, the 90-day and the 30-day, and, and that, those are all delays to a project, which are critical. So I just kind of wanted to clarify.
Thank you for clarifying the difference between on-the-ground activities. Like, I had some experience with that as well as the planning stage. Really critical. Anyone else in the audience like to comment on this? Okay, let's move on to 8.2, which is AB 130 and SB 131 summary.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. This is a summary of Assembly Bill 130 and Senate Bill 131 that went into effect on July 1 of this year. These budget trailer bills signed by Governor Newsom on June 30 of 2025 reform SEQA, housing laws, and permitting to the streamlining, streamline housing and infrastructure development. I'm going to highlight some provisions relevant to our responsibilities, including impacts on accessory dwelling units and considerations for high-fire severity zones. Starting with AB 130, it focuses on streamlining housing by enhancing SEQA exemptions and permitting processes. Key provisions include exemption for infill housing, exempts qualifying 100% residential or mixed-use projects, at least 2/3s residential, up to 20 acres, or 5 acres for builder's remedy projects for SEQA if located in incorporated cities or urban areas consistent with local plans, meeting 50% of the mullen density, which is 10 to 15 units per acre for lower-income housing. Avoiding hazardous sites, including farmlands, wetlands, or high or very high fire since severity zones unless mitigated per Senate Bill 35, and complying with expedited tribal consultation and air filtration standards. Prevailing wage is required for 100% affordable projects or buildings over 85 feet in height. And fire, higher, fire hazard severity zones limit eligibility unless mitigated and defensible space or fire-resistant construction. It will provide a building freeze from October 1 of this year to June 1, 2031 that prohibits new restrictive residential standards except for wildfire mitigation, allowing updates in the fire hazard severity zone for safety. It requires approval or disapproval within 60 days, 30 days post-tribal consultation for exempt infill, but fire hazard severity zones may not qualify unless mitigated. VMT, it allows contributions to a transit fund with local discretion effective July 1, 2026. It does extend the Housing Accountability Act protections. It amends Senate Bill 648 to restrict subdivisions in fire hazard severity zones. I just say it three times fastly. Enhances Senate Bill 4 and eliminates grandfathered ADU ordinance protections while restricting HOA fees. For ADUs, this removes the local ministerial approval requirements and objective standards, except lot size, prohibiting fees and reasonable, and reasonable restrictions, and boosting development in Placerville. For SB 131, it broadens SEQA exemptions and addresses homelessness funding. So SEQA near miss streamlining, it limits the review to a single disqualifying conditions impact excluding fire hazard severity zones unless mitigated. SEQA exemptions, it includes housing element rezoning, farmworker housing, and wildfire risk reduction, e.g., the prescribed burn defensible space, exempt from CETA, 8 SEQA, aiding in fire hazard severity mitigation. The HAP program allocates $8 million for administration and $500 million starting July 1, 2026, if 50% of round six funds are obligated. And it requires urban infill site mapping by July 1, 2027. In high or very high fire severity zones, like parts of Placerville, projects face restrictions unless mitigated. AB's, AB 130's infill exemption and Senate Bill 648 subdivisions are unavailable without mitigation, while SB's 131's wildfire exemption supports safety measures. Implement, implement, ten, sorry, I'm struggling tonight. Yeah. For us, including updating SEQA processes, meeting, permit streamlining act timelines, especially for ADUs, preparing for the code freeze with fire hazard severity zone exceptions, ensuring tribal consultations, monitoring VMT guidance, and strengthening historic designations and assessing fire hazard severity zone impacts early. These reforms will increase housing options, including ADUs, while addressing fire risks. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. This concludes my presentation.
Does anyone have questions about the summary from staff? Okay. Would anyone from the public like to comment on the summary of AB 130 and SB 131?
Kathy Lishman. I know the state has changed a lot of things and taken a lot of things out of communities' control. I guess with all of the things that they have passed that communities now have to do, I would like some time to see a thing, what is still available to the community to have some say about. If a lot of things are taken away and the zoning element and the general plan in many cases can't be applied like the community had developed it to be, what, what, what does the community still have say about? Because I'm afraid we're going to end up with communities that aren't at all what we were hoping to have. I mean, I know there's a need for housing, but I also think there's an important, community planning is important and what fits in and, and so it's kind of confusing.
Okay. Ms. Kendrick, do you have a response to that? I know that these are targeted, this, 130, the second report that you gave targeted toward a lot of housing, which, you know, we are at a crisis level. That's, I have not read the entire bill, but I'm sure that, you know, you've given us a very thorough summary. But one thing that I actually was pleased to see under the SEQA exemptions that they approved was exemption for prescribed fire, defensible space, and fuel break projects. You know, in our community, we're starting to undertake a lot of that work. In years past, there was a long SEQA process of doing surveys for rare plants, animals, even cultural resources in order to build, to reduce vegetation and to build fire breaks. And we, as we all know, this is just a very critical, important thing, work needs to be done. But to answer more specifically, Ms. Lishman's concern, community control over development, I said, I'm seeing this as ADUs and infill, there's still a lot of, that goes on our community that we have control over, or do you have a comment about that?
I would, I would encourage people to pay attention to what's going on in our state and pay attention to what the Assembly and the Senate are doing. I have, you know, probably in the last 10 years, seen a lot of laws go through that do take away local control, which I know is a huge issue, and a lot of unfunded state mandates. And California cities, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Every jurisdiction is, is unique in its own way. And so, I, I just would encourage people to get more involved, let the city council know, talk with your, you know, your Assembly representative, your Board of Supervisor representative. It's, I think it's important to, you know, talk with those sort of people that, that need to know. Also, you know, being involved with different organizations like California League of Cities, they do a lot of research on proposed Assembly and Senate bills and they do encourage cities to, you know, send in letters of support or opposition, but they, they'll do an analysis and do work with a lot of our, our local cities and counties. So, I, I just would encourage people to get more involved and, and.
And to get the attention of city council if it, we see that there are concerns, I mean, it's certainly something that our city attorney could be directed. City council thinks that a deeper analysis, looking at how this would apply more specifically in our community, you know, that would be something that they could possibly direct city council to do. So, I mean, city attorney to do for us.
Correct.
Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Okay. Let's recess for five minutes, take a short break before we go on with the rest of our agenda. Let's reconvene at 7:20, please. I'd like to ask everybody to take their seats and come back to the dais so we can get on with the meeting. It's. Or not. Okay, 7:23, reconvening our meeting tonight. Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to 10 continued items. We don't have any continued items. And new business, Ms. Kendrick, no new business listed on the agenda. So, it takes us over to matters from commissioners and staff. We'll start with staff reports, update us, status of upcoming meetings, recent actions taken to the city council, and status for completion of city community projects and so on. So, I'll turn this over again to you, Ms. Kendrick.
Okay, so there's only been one meeting since the last time that the Planning Commission met. And so, I did want to update you on the city council meeting from August 12th. We did receive an update that the city manager recruitment has an update. And so, Dave Morris, our Assistant City Manager and Director of Finance, has been selected as the new city manager pending Cleve's retirement. And then, DSD did have quite a few things on the 12th. We did take the Thompson House General Plan Amendment, Zone Change and Conditional Use Permit forward to the city council. They did recommend approval and it's going for its second reading on the zone change at their meeting next week. Dave, I said Dave Morris, I meant Dave Warren. I'm a little flustered tonight. And then, I did ask the city council to provide direction to amend the zoning ordinance. So, what I'd like to do is look at our administrative and quasi-judicial process and see where we need to make some adjustments. One of the things that I've noticed is that tentative parcel maps should really be coming through the Planning Commission. They're approved by the Community Development Services Director. So, and then, looking at some other ways where we might have some projects approved administratively, trying to become more business-friendly. But like I said, this, the draft findings will come before the Planning Commission, before going on to the city council. I'll be working on doing that analysis and I'm open to any suggestions that the commission has. But I did want to kind of just do kind of that overview and see where we need to make adjustments. I did also receive authorization from the city council to do an RFP for on-call environmental services to support SEQA compliance. I know we don't get a lot of projects that require an initial study and whatever required SEQA document that would occur based on the initial study findings. But due to staffing, I'd be looking at someone that could be doing peer review of SEQA documents that we have the applicant provide. So, I know that's a change, but, you know, unfortunately, we don't have the staff to prepare them. And SEQA documents are the most challenged when it comes to planning and so we want to make sure that the city is protected as well. Another item that DSD took forward was an authorization for the city manager to execute a fee deferral agreement for the Middletown Apartment Complex. So, there are new laws in place that state that we cannot require the payment of impact fees until occupancy, prior to occupancy. And so, we have Middletown Apartment Complex that is looking to get their building permits and we can require an agreement that gives us some kind of comfort level in moving forward, having this agreement in place to ensure that the city does get the impact fees. And so, that was approved by the city council. And then, we had the Development Services Department monthly stats, which we are still plugging away, very busy. We've taken in a couple of new applications, including a tentative subdivision map for the Ridgeford Orchard Hill, and that includes a planned development overlay and a conditional use permit. We did take in a site plan review for some parking lot expansion for an existing apartment project. And then, I believe we got a preliminary review in as well. So, we've been starting to see an uptick, or I've seen more of an uptick since I've been here. And that's all I have for the city council updates. As far as our next agenda, I did advertise Home Depot, so this would be for their conditional use permit, master sign plan amendment and a variance. This would be to accommodate their tool rental center that would be located internally. Then they want to do mechanic, or equipment and trailer rental from the parking lot. The variance would be for the reduction in parking and I did ask them to address some of the parking areas that show as parking but are being used for storage. And then, they will be requesting some amendments to their sign program to reflect the tool rental center and some things of that nature. And then, the sociology master sign plan amendment will be coming forward as well. And I think that's all we have pending for that meeting right now. We are looking at an amendment to the bed and breakfast ordinance based on some discussions and recommendations of Vice Mayor Gottberg, just a quick zoning ordinance amendment. So, I'll be doing a small analysis on that, but that needs a 20-day add, so I'll be probably putting it on the second meeting in September. But, and more to come. Like I said, as projects get closer, we'll, we'll keep you updated. That concludes my report. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Kirk, you have your mic on? You have a comment?
Yeah, give me a follow-up, Carol. I'm not sure you mentioned that what came up at the last City Council meeting at the very end, not mentioned on the agenda, was the idea that the staff would be making changes to our bylaws. Am I correct? And coming back to the...
No. So what the mayor had recommended at the end of the meeting is that staff bring back a discussion item on looking at who approves the bylaws. So it would be either the Planning Commission to stay as is, or the Planning Commission makes suggestions and a recommendation, but the City Council would codify that or approve that as this is an appointed body. So I'm doing research right now and looking at jurisdictions our size and smaller jurisdictions and seeing how they're done, if they're done by ordinance, if they're done by bylaws, and who's approving those bylaws. And so we're doing some analysis to bring back to the City Council for discussion, but we're not drafting any ordinance at this time. So I'm working with Cleve on that, and we'll... Like I said, I don't think I'm going to have anything ready for the 26th, but maybe their first meeting in September or second meeting in September, I plan on bringing a discussion item forward.
I guess the reason I ask is it was a surprise, because most of my 15 years of observing this body has been from the other side, and I've noticed that for all that time, every year when the body starts, the Planning Commission comes up with changes to the bylaws if they want or adopt them. So this is a first, and it's a very dramatic change. The city has always had a policy about transparency and open disclosure, so it's trying to find out why the change. Why bypass the Planning Commission after all these years?
I don't think the intent was to bypass the Planning Commission. I think it was to receive your recommendations on the bylaws, but let the council be the final approval authority. I don't... There would still be Planning Commission involvement, but again, it's just a discussion item, so that's what the intent that I...
So you do intend to bring it back to us?
Oh, 100%.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff about upcoming meetings or anything? Okay. Let's move on to 2.2, Planning Commission matters. And first up is 12.2.1, the Historic Design Guidelines. We had quite a bit of information provided for this meeting, and first off, thank you very much, Ms. Kendrick, for your summary and your report to us, and also thank you, Ms. Lepper, for all of your work to summarize this body's work to date on this issue. So I would appreciate taking comment first about an item that's been outstanding since January this year. It's attachment A to the staff report. Then we'll... After that, I'd like to... Amy, if you had something you wanted to summarize or point out to us about the work that you've done, we'll take that up next, and then discuss finally the Planning Commission effort spreadsheet. And is that your work also?
Alyssa.
That's your work?
Yeah.
Okay. So thanks to both of you for doing all this, summarizing, digging in deep to this whole topic. So the January 28th memo, I had asked for comments earlier this year on the memo that I provided, where I talked about our resources. Let's see, there's the SOI standards and some technical briefs that I had come across that I thought were relevant, that technical brief 16. And then at the end of this, I had provided you some of my thoughts and some possible findings that we could keep at hand when we get these projects, so that we can be objective and assure the public that we are considering all of these projects in the same manner. And the reason that I had proposed this is, in my research, I think we all would like to have a checklist of what's allowed and what isn't allowed. People like to have things in black and white, you know? Is this kind of window allowed? Is that kind of window not allowed? Is this kind of siding good? Not. And we certainly could take that approach. Other jurisdictions, other cities have. I've seen on certain... I don't want to name which ones, but they'll have a list of what kind of change to a historical structure is routinely approved, and therefore, what they have done is make it exempt from further review by their Planning Commission. Years ago, Andrew Painter proposed that to the Planning Commission. He said, you know, routinely people come forward, they want to do, for instance, a roof change, a window change, whatever, and they would come and present, and it seemed to be that the Planning Commission would have a hearing and approve them. And so it was his thinking that the city could streamline this approval process by, you know, creating, you know, within things that just would essentially be ministerial. And at that time, the Planning Commission declined to go that direction. We felt that it was maybe a little too cookie cutter, for lack of a better word, that, you know, we needed to maintain review and control over what these materials are. So we decided to not go that way. And also in my review of the updated SOI standards, this technical brief 16, it occurred to me that even if we did a checklist, you know, a certain type of... For example, there was a wood-clad window that came for our approval. We took a look at it. I think they brought us a lot of brochures, and we approved it for a house in one of our historic districts. But that's, you know, a product that was available in 2024, whenever, and as you research this, you realize that there is a new industry driving the development of products that are suitable for historic buildings of all vintages. And for us to come up with a list today in 2025, you know, it may become obsolete within, you know, less than a year. Something new hits the market, it's exactly, you know, what's needed as far as insulation, the aesthetic, that's really what, you know, we focus in on, is that aesthetic, but insulation, fire safety, wildfire protection, and as I learn more and more about this, and quite honestly, a lot of it's driven by the insurance industry. People who own these structures, they need to get insurance, and the insurance agent comes out and says, you know, "We can't do that unless you make modifications." So realizing that, especially in California with our high wildfire risk, the industry is responding and coming out with a lot more products that we have no idea what's going to come down the line. So those were my recommendations. So just to give you, kind of bring you up to speed or review of what my thinking was, I'd like to hear what your thoughts were on this memo, and if this is a direction you'd be interested in going.
So at the June meeting, we had talked about this, about your request for input on the standard findings for historic review. I agree with your description of where what our discussions have led to, that having a standard list of things is not necessarily the most effective way to go forward, and having it continue to be reviewed by Planning Commission on a case-by-case basis is the most effective way to keep our oversight on the districts while also being realistic and responsive to the needs of homeowners. So I went ahead and fulfilled your request of looking at your suggested standard findings that we could include in historic district applications, and I submitted those in my packet at the end. Again, I apologize for bringing this up at the last meeting, when I did not realize it was not a standing agenda item, but this is what I had presented, and basically, it's very similar to what you proposed in your original memo, with just like a little bit of language changes and some bringing together like two of the points to just make it three overall findings. So that was my response, that was my input on standard findings. I do think that they really take into consideration what our goals are in the historic districts and qualify our decisions. So that's all I really have to say.
And again, you know, I don't want to take a cookie cutter approach, but again, you know, people have, in the past, had objections that we treated different applicants differently, and so I think this gives us a good starting point, anyway, to make sure that maybe we don't use this as boilerplate language, but we look at each one of these and judge each project to say, well, yeah, you know, we looked at these standards. It's really on the applicant to come forward and demonstrate this, and perhaps to putting this out for the applicants, then they know what it is we're looking for, so that we have confidence that we're making the right decision.
I agree with that, sharing it with the applicants. As someone who does not live in a historic district without that personal experience, looking at the SOI standards is a bit overwhelming, as well as many of the links on our website lead to they're expired or there are documents that have been taken down. So I would say I don't think that we necessarily need those strict guidelines, but it would be helpful, I think, for applicants to maybe have like a one-pager summary of the SOI documents or the standards that we typically look towards, just in easing their mind of whether or not this might get approved or not. And then my recommendation for the website would be to, like, download the specific documents that we utilize and then re-upload those to our website, so that if SOI takes it down, we're not impacted, our residents aren't impacted.
Well, my concerns are a couple of things. One is that the original body was a two-member committee that was created by Michael Friend. It was a sharp three-to-two vote that created it, and a lot of work went into it for nearly two years, and it was with great resistance, particularly by the staff. Pierre Rivas did not want it and made it very clear. So that was a challenge to work with. We have no, right now, record to work on. What we proposed was very simple, and I hope you've all looked at it, but here's more copies of what we had. But this is the key thing. We recommended that you have public workshops, just like what you had earlier, public workshops. So when it comes to something like, for example...
Could you speak into your microphone? Because when I was reviewing a lot of the videos...
You're messing up a lot of things, right?
When I was reviewing the videos, it was really hard to hear you. If you could sit at your microphone and speak into it.
Yeah. But the idea is that we don't have anything to support this. For example, I think the first page I saw said that the SOI standards have flexibility. No, that's not quite clear. I asked for more than two years for the city attorney to be with us, to answer these kind of questions. I approached her with Cleve present and asked her about the standards that are used, and it's similar to what's done with the federal rules of civil procedure or administrative procedure. You have findings, and then you make a rule-making process. But with municipalities, what she explained is that you put it in the form of a letter or resolution. But we set standards. For example, you've got something down here about 30 is the cutoff point, 1930. But that simplicity is a problem, because it doesn't work that way. What we know about buildings is that from whether they're built in 1860 or 1930, throughout their lifetime, they don't remain the same. They change, like we saw in that tour of historic homes. We saw that one of the first things that gets changed is bathrooms and kitchens. So we've had buildings in town that don't look anything like the way they originally designed. And I'll give you one example, it's just the building we approved of last year for a German beer hall, and if you look inside, that is old 1800s civil gold rush era. I mean, big chunks of plaster rock, but on the outside, doesn't look anything like it. It's a real hodgepodge, and we've had some houses like that. So there has to be... Can be a different kind of standard. And the reason we got that cutoff point, we need to go over the history. History is, we had an applicant on Cedar Ravine in an historic district, a developer, who had a 1950s ranch-style house. He argued that despite it being in that district, the historic standards don't apply. He kept arguing three times, it doesn't apply, and he gave an example of a friend of his who was a former City Council member, and she said the adoption of the standards were done to apply to Victorian-era houses. He came back to the City Council on an appeal, and he argued the same thing, and he actually had a letter from that former City Council member, and that former City Council member was present, though she didn't speak. It wasn't until after, after the hearing was all over, that Pierre pointed out that her comments were irrelevant, because she was on the City Council with the first standards, not the SOI standards, so it didn't apply. And I know that's fine for political people to do, but if a lawyer ever did that, you'd get more than just chewed out. So this body and the City Council was deprived of the full information. They were misled, because they were told that the guidelines only applied to Victorian structures. So that's an example why I would be hesitant to put a cutoff point, and there needs to be flexibility. I've worked on historic homes, both commercial and residential. I don't have the answers. I want to hear from the public. I want to hear from workshops, and we know that talent's available, because I talked to Cleve, who's done it many times gracefully and very effectively, without any adding extra bills, and we've seen it done tonight. So if you hear from people, then you're going to get some answers that we might learn from. And then you have a record, but right now, I don't see the record to do this besides just casual chatter.
Couple of questions. One, I don't think the 1930s timeline has been implemented. That was just a suggestion for evaluation, so we're not abiding by that.
That's right.
Okay.
Where's the foundation for it?
Okay, so it's not in play. So it was an idea, and we're not... No applications have been judged against that. So it's kind of irrelevant. It's like challenging an idea, not something that's been implemented.
Just to... I did summarize that in this memo. This work came as a result of the direction we received from City Council in January this year. Their top priority was for us to review the existing standards, which is, you know, what led to these proposed findings that I've given. Also, in this memo, a high priority for us is to designate age of structure, and as I said on... I'm sorry, it's not numbered, it's page three. The reason we have that number is that I had looked at, at that time, the current inventory, so what was in our inventory of what the city considers historic in our historic districts, the range went as late as 1930. So given our direction from City Council to work with what we already have on the books that we have in our inventories, that to me seems like, you know, a reasonable cutoff. Yeah, it's arbitrary, but until we can undertake a new inventory...
With the contributing and non-contributing.
Exactly. Contributing and non-contributing. Exactly, contributing and non-contributing. I think that that's a very reasonable date. We, you know, we have all of this on file. And you know better than I do, this was, this is my quick review of what was on the website in January. You have already gone in and, you know, ferreted out and reorganized. Is nineteen thirty, did you find anything later than nineteen thirty?
I haven't found a date to be the most effective way for us to, I, I haven't reviewed in depth on that, like the numbers. I have stated multiple times, particularly this year, that I think identifying our contributing versus non-contributing properties should be the best method for us to ensure that those that we find to be contributing properties, this is standard across all of the research that I did in communities that have very high levels of evaluation. They have contributing properties with, I believe it's context statements. Is that what it is? Context statements that back up why they are contributing properties to the districts, and those are held to a higher standard. Versus non-contributing properties, which would be, for example, the nineteen fifties homes where we want them to keep the aesthetic because we want the entire district to maintain its current aesthetic. And that we would evaluate their applications perhaps less harsh, not harshly, I don't want to use the word harshly, but less strictly than ones that are, say, a Victorian home or the Judge Thompson House or on a historic register, things like that.
So in that case, we, we would create yet another finding. We haven't had that come before us, but-
No, well, we don't have them.
Where we, where we would have to take it case by case and say, yes, this is a contributing-
Yes.
-structure, or no, it's, it's not, and that's why we, we are or are not applying these standards more strictly. But, you know, as far as saying, this is considered historic, we have our inventory. And to me, nineteen thirty is the most recent date that is, you know, in our published, verifiable, you know, inventory. When we get the money to, to update the inventory, that, you know, that could change. But from where we are today, and we don't have a plan to update the inventory because that is time-consuming and expensive. You know, even if we undertook it next week, it's, it's going to be a while before it comes online. And we could have a project come before us before we have that new inventory updated. So that's, that's where the nineteen thirty, it's from our existing documents, from our historic inventory that we have already published on our website.
I guess the question to ask is, why are we talking about that inventory when it, for example, includes Main Street, which isn't an historic district? Our historic districts, like Cedar Ravine, have coverage where the SOI standards apply. And they apply to properties whether they're listed on that inventory or not. So the inventory is not relevant. Secondly-
Well, then, so your, your question is, why are we talking about the inventory? So that's a good question. We have our inventory, and it, it was you who questioned the nineteen thirty date. So the reason we're talking about it is because you brought that up. So that's what our, until a review of the inventory shows something more recent than nineteen thirty, I mean, we can always take that date as our most recent.
And my understanding was that one of the questions was, because the way that, the way that the historical ordinance is written right now, the SOI standards in the historic districts do apply to all buildings, whether they have a historic value or not.
That's the way, yes.
So my understanding, and I'm sorry if I'm coming in a little in the back, but is that what we're trying to research here is whether, what the flexibility is to maybe not have to apply those standards to all of those buildings.
And what I'm trying, you're right, the flexibility, and to demonstrate to the public that, that we have, we're applying the flexibility allowed within the standards because we, we have looked at those, those-
Well, there's that, and then there's also the possibility of amending the ordinance so that we don't have to apply the SOI standards to non-contributing buildings once we have that information.
Or we can apply, so there are also new SOI sustainability standards that have come out, which means that all of the ones that we've been using historically, I think, have been sort of usurped by these new sustainability ones that allow for all of the updated materials that we're trying to account for.
And the flexibility that we're trying to achieve.
Yes, which allows us to maintain the aesthetic of the districts while letting people incorporate sustainable materials into their updates.
And wildfire resilience.
So there is flexibility in the SOI standards, and particularly with the updated sustainability standards that I presented after your guys' report, that show that, yes, you don't have to bring in wood siding to replace wood siding, especially if we do not have it listed as a contributing property, which we don't have any particularly listed in our, in our districts.
And the, the sustainability guidelines do have recommendations and then non-recommendations. So I think that could be part of, and what's reviewed as part of an application is, does this project fall within what's recommended under the SOI?
Yes.
And, I mean, there is a framework right there.
Yes, and that's what I've been saying this entire year, is that I do not think that we need to have a list of things, just like you stated. I don't think it's effective, and I think having them come before us, reviewing the materials that they have presented in a case-by-case basis, and then implementing your standard findings that you drafted that say that we have determined as a body that the SOI standards have been applied in a reasonable manner, which is what they asked to do, taking into account both economic and technical feasibility, that the material conveys physical compatibility with existing materials and context, and preserves the distinctive visual features of the existing historic structure. I think that right there nails the reason that we are making our decisions. It says, we have looked at this, it is not changing the aesthetic of the home, regardless of when it was built, because we don't have that as a parameter, and that it is preserving our, our overall aesthetic from the exterior, which is, again, the only street view is the only thing that we have jurisdiction over.
That's right.
So a bathroom is not under our, our review. I also agree that you're finding, to go back to these, because I really would like to hammer these ones out if possible, that the project as proposed or amended is consistent with the historic context of the property and the surrounding area, and that it is a minimal change, and that fire, fire hazard is a severe threat in our area, and the project utilizes materials that preserve the physical and visual attributes of the existing structure but are superior with regards to sustainability and/or fire resistance. I actually thought those were really amazing findings. I think that they are very applicable to all of the applications that come before us, while still allowing us to take a look at each application that comes before us. There is no cutoff. There is, like I said, there's no contributing. Our, our inventory has not been updated, and we don't have context statements for houses in our, in our district. So as far as my research goes, they all come before us, basically as the same kind of house right now. They're within a historic district. They're applied with the same exact things. And in each case, we can evaluate the value of applying stricter or more lean, not more lenient, but more flexible, and particularly with regards to material standards to the houses in there, while maintaining the aesthetic of the historic district, which is what I understand to be the goal.
Okay, with that in mind, I do have some suggested edits.
Yes, great.
I, I think that the findings are really good. I just thought that maybe there was some clarification that could be made about the, how we are applying the standards because it is based on the district and not necessarily the designation of, of the building at this time. So, so I guess, I'm not really sure how to describe this. So under, for the first finding, it says, the planning commission has determined that the SOI standards have been applied in a reasonable manner, taking into account economic and technical feasibility. Second sentence, the subject application replaces the subject item with material. And I thought we could add and design because, just to clarify that it's not necessarily just the material that may be under review for a project necessarily.
So that goes on to read-
With material and design.
Visual features of the existing historic structure, perhaps distinctive visual features and design of the-
Well, the material and the design that conveys the physical and visual compatibility, and I think that the and visual there is important because you originally had that.
Okay.
And it comes directly from the technical guidance. And the physical and visual compatibility are kind of two different things that are trying to be-
The material itself has that, and then it goes on to say, preserving the distinctive visual features of, that's, at the end of the-
So-
Okay, I understand.
And then with the historic materials, replacing existing with historic. Because, I guess I was just trying to think of different scenarios, like if this is a restoration project and we're taking something that's maybe been taken out of, like, changes that have been taken out of context, and the attempt is to restore it back to its historic value. So existing might not, so-
The only thing that I would say about replacing existing with, with historic is that not all of the items-
Well, the reason I think it works is because we have materials slash context. So it's the historic context that could also is being met there. And preserves the distinctive, character-defining features, so replace the visual with character-defining features of the existing historic structure or building located within the historic district. And that would be something that maybe we would change if, you know, as we're making changes based on contributing and non-contributing structure, buildings.
So add that to at the end of the-
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm doing this verbally.
A building located in a historic district, okay.
And then on the second finding, it says, the overall effect of the project as proposed or amended is consistent with the historic context of the property and surrounding area. The project as approved is a minimal change to the overall external property. I think we can take out that second sentence because I was a little bit confused when I read a minimal change to the overall external property because I think unless we're defining what that is, it's just kind of, and it's not a necessary addition. Because really what we're trying to do is find that it's consistent with the historic context of the property and surrounding areas.
I think that's a good point, too, because we did have a new build that we discussed about the overall look of it. And so I think, not talking about the current external property, it's kind of superfluous. It doesn't necessarily apply consistently. So I do think that that, that coming out-
So in the, as originally written, the project as proposed is a minimal change to the overall property. Are you, you saying that that's sufficient?
I think eliminate it because there could be situations- Just take it out because, because we could have rehabilitation projects, you know, that include an addition or like Vice Chair Leber just brought up a new build. And so, you know, what's a minimal change? And really what we're trying to do is, is find that the project is consistent with the historic context of the property and the surroundings.
I agree with that.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yeah, we haven't had a, a new build. Actually, we did have one, right. In fact, they're just breaking ground on it now.
Could you give me your initial ones again? The planning commission has determined that the SOI standards have been applied in a reasonable- Where does your edit come in?
So my edit starts-
Subject application replaces subject item with material that can-
With material and design, add and design, that conveys the physical and visual, add and visual, compatibility with remove existing and replace with historic material slash context. And preserves the distinctive, replace visual with character-defining features of the existing historic structure or building located within the historic district. I think, my thought I have, though, is I think where this finding could be a little bit challenging, though, is that, and I think we're working towards this, is we need to have that char, the character of these historic districts defined in order to use that finding. So.
And that may be something we, staff may have to prepare, be in the staff report, or we may need to craft that, depending on what the project is, but yeah, stating that-
So we can look at it on a case-by-case basis, based on what the applicants provide.
And I have some, I've done some more research on our website and some more research on other cities, and I've found some great examples of cities that do give specific character-defining features for different kinds of homes in different districts, one of which I was going to bring up tonight to have you guys take a look at and see what you think about heading in that direction with the website, with define, redefining, like Alyssa said, making our website more clear, more accessible for homeowners, and more updated in conjunction with rolling out that GIS map that Cleve Morris has helped prepare, or the planning, someone, someone at the city prepared. And incorporating some of these documents, updating and incorporating documents onto our website that give exactly that, which would make this finding feasible because it's very clear and accessible to the public.
Yep, and that's where establishing that time, that timeframe of significance is so important for the districts.
I guess a couple of things I'd ask you. Let's just take, for example, on Main Street down at the lower end, there was Elder Options that's now operated by a law office. That was the Fornie Toll House. It's down across Catty Corner from Kentucky Fried Chicken. That's not an historic district. It's on the registry of, of significant buildings, but it's not on an historic district. So our historic standards apply to those buildings that are in historic districts. That's not one of them, number one. Number two is, Ryan and I spent a considerable amount of time in the space of a couple of years going through all kinds of, of surveys that have been done like that in various areas, and kept noting that ours was inadequate and filled with lots of mistakes. For example, I cited the example of Old Town Grill is listed as former Garber's Grocery Store in the eighteen hundreds. No, that building that's there now, our family used to own it, wasn't even there in the nineteen thirties, your standard, or the forties. The building next door that's not listed where Cup of Coffee is, that is historic. Inside, there's blocks of plasterite, and I'm holding up my hands like two feet wide, big cubes. That building is historic, but it's not listed. That inventory is replete with mistakes. I don't know how many decades old, but it's very old. So if you're using the standards of the nineteen thirties, anyway, it's changed. So I'm not sure that that, that inventory, well, it's something that we need to address, needs not be addressed for the SOI standards, because I haven't heard anybody say that the SOI standards applies to it. Does it?
You know, as you pointed out, that isn't a part of the, you know, a historic district. And I'll just redirect you to our direction from city council. Review the historic district inventory and update as needed. I'll just read from Cleve Morris's memo to us, council direction. Council agrees that with the recommendation to update the inventory. They do not feel it's a priority at this time. In addition, due to the cost of the program, it's recommended that grant funds be sought to complete this project. It is noted that this cannot be done by just anyone, but it needs to be done by professionals in this field. We all recognize that. So, right, you know, city council read our summary and agrees that needs to be done. However, there's just not funding for it until we can either identify those funds or obtain a grant to do the work. So, right, there's going to be mistakes in our inventory, and that's just not something that we're trying to address tonight. We're focused on reviewing and finalizing these standards and then moving on to talk about the website enhancement and the other things. about the website enhancement and the other things listed. So that's what we're discussing tonight. And, you know, duly noted, we all agree that we want to get the mistakes out of there. We would like to update the inventory. But until time that we have that funding identified, there's just unfortunately nothing we can do about it. Now, if a project did come before us, you know, that's information that the applicant may be bringing forward or perhaps someone with local knowledge would like to comment on it, to bring it to our attention. But it's just really not within our scope of work right now. Right now, we're looking to move forward so that the public is confident that we are applying the standards objectively and with the flexibility allowed. And so that's, you know, I appreciate you doing the research. I know that you and Ryan Carter did a lot of work, a lot of, yeah, a lot of walking and reviewing to find those kinds of mistakes. But until we can take care of it, it's really something we have to put to one side. And if that grant money can be found, then we can, the city definitely would, you know, consider taking it up.
If I could just add, I mean, and I think the inventory is a really important piece of this puzzle, but it's not something that we need to meet the city council's request to build this, basically our framework for how we're going to review our projects at this point. Yeah.
And it doesn't have anything to do with the historic districts, by the way. So I'm glad that we didn't bring it up.
Okay, so we've crafted, made a few edits to these proposed standard findings, if you will. So moving on, we've discussed it. I'd like to take comment from the public on our work on this first item under, let's see, let me stay, help me stay focused. We are under 12.2.2 of these proposed standard findings. So at this time, I'd like to take comment from the public about this proposed approach. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sure.
Take a public comment.
Sure, recognizing, I see that we are focusing on the SOI standards. However, I recognize that it's come up quite a bit, this discussion on the age of the structures and the range. I agree with what you said in your memo that we need to be able to move forward with the information that we have now. And an inventory is going to take a lot of time and funding that that's going to happen a long time, not necessarily a long time from now, but we're going to have applications come before that. So we need to be able to move forward from this topic. So I am comfortable with the 1860 to 1930 proposal.
And I want to emphasize that that was, you know, a next point in that January 28 memo. And right now, I really do want to focus in on this. We can talk about our next steps once we take care of the items that we have listed for discussion for tonight. So thanks a lot. Now, I'd like to open up for comments from the public about this.
Chair Keeney, if I may, this is for item 12.2.1.
What did she say, point two?
Did I say 12.2.1, historic design guidelines?
Public comment for that.
So the public comment, and we'll, we have four things under this that we would like to discuss tonight. But right now, I'd like to take care of this and take a public comment on this proposed standard findings.
I apologize, my notes are just kind of all over as I was adding, I think, adding things. The statement that GIS mapping will help identify contributing versus non-contributing structures in a historic district, I don't, I don't know how that happens.
I meant that having more clear maps on our website would then allow us to highlight.
Analyze it, okay.
Down the line.
But it's not the GIS mapping.
We'll have the tool, yeah, instead of the paper maps that only half exist right now and don't show parcels, we'll have the tools to be able to implement those greater distinctions down the line.
Okay, and that's a thing where you can add data to, like you bring in a parcel and you can just start dropping info as you gather it?
From my understanding, I'm no GIS expert, but it's just a more interactive feature on the website, like I said, versus the very, very outdated and not even there maps that don't really highlight whether you're in the district or not. So it could be a lot more interactive than it currently is.
Speaking of, I think the city should just get rid of their search bar because it is completely worthless. Try searching for the historic district maps.
Working on that.
Unless you got a day. But so to the website, I think the webpage that you were talking about, I think improvement, I can't really remember exactly how it was, but I liked two clicks to the inventory, historic district inventory, the multi-page long list, excellent. There was a couple of links that were duplicates, even though the subject matter was different. So I think those are just placeholders. I would like to add a link to the California SHPO State Office of Historic Preservation. Tons of information there, that's a good link to be on that page. Maybe on that page, too, is if, instead of trying to make a checklist of everything you like or don't like, maybe you can show the award-winning project that we really love, you know, and some ideas of before and after photos and something that you liked about it, how they used the proper materials and made it, kept the historic look. I'm kind of not keen on the, creating a cookie cutter pre-written finding. It seems to me then, somebody could argue that you didn't really analyze their project individually. It's just something about having a pre-made sentence.
They're additional to the findings for the individual applications. These would just be showing our consistency with our evaluation.
But getting to that discussion of the pre-written finding, member Sylvester, I don't see it written, but listening to what you were adding to it, I really appreciate it. So I'd love to see that in the future written down. I don't even think having an era of significance is important. You're already short on having standards and you're adding a new layer of something else to, I don't know. But also, it seems like adding a era of significance, you're trying to strip out other properties that could be significant. A 1950s ranch house, which has earned its own credit, is now, you know, doesn't get the scrutiny. I would like this body to ask City Council to change the ordinance language that says the SOI applies to historic districts. I think it needs to apply to anything on the historic resource inventory list. And then you start adding in the state and the federal specific buildings outside of the districts, other buildings and places that are on that list that aren't in the district. I'll have to read more about this SOI sustainability, going to materials that are, you know, better for fighting fire. But just to note, like, years ago, this body approved a 1920s, 1930s cottage up on Sacramento Street has the two-inch Cove ship lap siding, just too much, too much, too much, too much, horizontal siding, right? And they came in, they said some of it's rotten, we need to replace it. The planning commission approved seven-inch hardy plank as a suitable replacement. And in my mind, that is not even close to matching look like for like.
Mr. Derbis, I'm going to ask you to focus your comments on, this is item one. I don't know if you have this in front of you. We're reviewing and finalizing the proposed standard findings. And, you know, I noted that you want us to avoid boilerplate findings. And, you know, I think we've, we recognize that and we've discussed it. And that's a good point to emphasize. We are going to move on to some other things that you're kind of alluding to right now. So I'm going to ask, you know, for the sake of the other members who might want to speak to this first item, is there anything else that you'd like to tell us, your thoughts about these proposed standard findings for Houston project reviews?
Sure. I don't really agree with adding economic into the findings because in my mind, somebody can replace two windows this year, two windows next year, and the economic argument kind of disappears. I think I've asked before, this body should ask City Council to build a, create a special historic preservation building permit that is like two or four years long. And that removes that economic problem.
I believe in my review, that was actually something, SOI, one of the updates, they discuss it. So that's, that's why, you know, I felt it was important to include it, to allow some flexibility. This is what the updates are pointing toward. But, you know, again.
I think.
We're hearing that you want to have a specific ordinance. And that's something, again, we're not discussing tonight. And as we move forward, definitely it was one of the recommendations out of the special committee. So in the future, you know, that might be better for us to hear those comments at that time.
Oh, I'm just, you know, reading the title of 12.2.1, it seems like this fits in that category. So I just think each historic application here for remodel, et cetera, should get its own review by the planning commission.
Absolutely, yeah.
And require the applicant to come with those new modern materials and sell it to you. How this, it removes putting it on staff, on you, to build a list of approved products. Let an applicant come in and say, here's cement siding that matches my 1850s woods.
Again, that's, that's number, perhaps you don't have this from tonight's packet, but, you know, you're kind of jumping ahead. So if you have nothing else about the standard findings, I'm going to ask you to take a seat right now when we get to number four. That's exactly the wording that we're going to be talking about. So I think I'd like to hear your comments then, if you wouldn't mind.
Is there a 12.2.4?
There's, the item, introductory item to this, our summary from staff, it was part of the packet. And so on page two of that, the items for discussion are one through four. And number four is evaluate.
Not on my agenda.
Requiring applicants to submit high-quality photos or samples of proposed materials for accurate review. We're all in agreement. So, yeah, turn to page two, items for discussion.
12.2.1, right?
Just trying to break it into small.
And the title says historic design guidelines. I don't see a breakdown past that. Okay, and you're taking them one at a time?
Yep, that's what we're doing. We're breaking it into small bites. That's what we decided we were going to do. So I appreciate your comments, but I'd like to see it as we get to that item for discussion. Thank you. Again, to kind of emphasize, what we're trying to do is focus on these standard findings for use in project reviews. And I'd like to hear from anyone else in the audience who has a comment about that before we move on to the other three items for discussion. Okay, seeing no other comments, I'd like to just get a voice vote to move forward with this. So we have our final language. I think, I'd like to work with staff, perhaps, on how best to implement this or keep this on file for us as, when these projects come forward. We also talked about a one-pager, I can't remember who mentioned that. I think summarizing that, I volunteer to, you know, kind of take our discussion and come up with that one page for your approval. And that could be maybe part of what staff gives to an applicant. Again, you know, we want them to know what it is we need to see.
I'd be happy to assist with that or I, if you would like assistance with that, I'd be happy to help with the one-pager.
The one-pager?
Or do, or prepare it.
Okay. Well, I'll bring it back for comments from the entire commission, that one-pager. So a voice vote from those in favor of adopting these proposed standard findings for use in project reviews? Do we, we need a motion?
Should we have them come back in full next time or are we just going to move forward with what we discussed tonight?
I thought we could just go with what we discussed today. We've, Ms. Kendrick, do you think we need to have another printed version of these standard findings before we take action?
I think that would be helpful for everyone, including the public, to make sure we just have a clean document and that we've gotten everything and captured it correctly.
I want to do a little bit of research on the economic thing, too. I want to just kind of dig into that a little bit before adopting them in full.
All right, and then I actually have one more proposed revision, just in response to Commissioner Smith's comment about this addition to the building located within the historic district. What if we did and slash or? Because that would be inclusive of historic buildings outside of historic districts.
So that's under the first?
Yeah, the first finding.
And then?
The last sentence. So existing historic structures and/or building located within the historic district.
And/or a building.
I appreciate your effort. Try to find some accommodation, but my position will still be the same. We haven't heard from the public on these specific issues. A workshop that we know can be conducted because we had one tonight.
We requested an outline from you eight months ago about what the workshop would look like and what the cost would be and who would be involved and have yet to see that, so.
And I've given them real simple, for example.
I have not seen it.
Workshops aren't, I know this is a contentious issue. Again, this was part of the direction from City Council, keeping to a budget. And we're, I'm really trying to move forward on the recommendations that they gave us at the beginning of this year.
Well.
So we will await another version of these standard findings. Let's move on to number two, item for discussion. Discuss progress on the website, enhancement and GIS, GIS map integration to improve public access to historic district information. You're on top of that, so I'll turn that over to you, Amy.
Yeah, I have been continuing to roll around in this and see what the best way to move forward without deploying massive amounts of staff and resource time. And I recently found one that I'd like everyone to look at in, for an upcoming meeting discussion. It's the city of Woodyear, it's in California, my hometown. But when I was rolling around in it, they, I originally brought the city of Redlands one forward, but this one I actually think is a little more thorough. And I know Carol went to Redlands, my city's better, no, I'm kidding. So I found the city of Woodyear to be really straightforward in how they have their tabs laid out on the side. So if you go to their, I can provide the link maybe to Carol to send to you to make it easier, but it's very easy to find. But on the left-hand side, they have very basic tabs that talk about who does the oversight on this, what the, what the criteria is. It digs down into what you were describing, specific details related to different houses in the area. It was a Quaker town, so they have a lot of historic things and different styles. And so it really digs into each kind. Again, I don't know that we need that level of detail with the kinds of structures that we have here in our historic districts, at least from my untrained eye. I think we can be a lot more general than they are, but I think that the way that their layout is, is very achievable for our city to accomplish with minimal resources and minimal drafting of documents, actually even, because they are just very basic site pages. So I would like to encourage everyone to look at the city of Woodyear's historic page, pages prior to our next meeting and talk about how we can further, as the disappearing public noted, that the links on our current website are either outdated, broken, or are hidden in many, many different places. And I found that website to be very accessible and achievable to take all of our disjointed information, which I have presented before, my webpage outlined prior to, I think, you guys being on the commission, where I Googled on our search page, found all of the different places that all of this information does currently live and how we could then integrate that, it goes back to the GIS question, into the new website that, that the city has been working on that gives an updated map of how to locate whether you're in a historic district and then incorporate onto their, for lack of a better word, tabs. a better word, tabs, I don't know, I'm not a web person, but clickable things that make it so that it expands to different pages and shows you the information that you need, and also how to, how to approach this. Because right now, even finding out how to approach a historic district application when you're a homeowner in the historic district is kind of convoluted, and then to go find how to evaluate your application against things is also pretty convoluted. So I guess all of that to say that I am, I'm still doing ongoing research on it to find the best way to move forward prior to going and editing a bunch of things, or creating a bunch of documents, which I really don't think needs to be done, to integrate this new GIs map, and then add some more robust information to it that, again, already exists but could be cleaned up, simplified, and added onto one, one major page. So if you could check that out.
Have you had a chance to speak to the GIs specialist directly?
No, I wrote back to Cleve and Jackie, and I didn't hear back, and then I got Cleve's retirement thing, and so I was like, I think he's maybe a little over it. He probably has other things going on. And so I did write back to them saying I thought this was a great draft. I'd be happy, I actually, I think I asked them if I could show it, because I thought about showing the city of Woodyear and the, and the draft GIs map on the, yeah, I did it before on here, and I think it's just helpful for us to be able to visualize it together. And then, because my other goal is, since I am now pregnant, I will have a little timeline of January that I'm going to be pretty busy, and so if there's things that we could implement or work on together, I know both Alyssa and Catherine have expressed interest in helping to contribute to these updated materials. I do think they are not a lot of work, but I do think they take time and effort. And so what I'd like to do is really hammer out which Alyssa's timeline, or, I'm blanking on the word, I'm getting tired, which your inventory, or not inventory, your spreadsheet here, is really helpful, and I think that we could start to parse out even further once we decide how to move forward, ways that we could improve these documents, get the copy written, and then submit it to the city to be implemented.
This is a little bit off topic, topic from the GIs.
Yeah.
But since you brought this up, I, I think this is great, and I wanted to see if we could add all of, all of the activities.
Yes.
Or commitments, I guess.
To provide a quick summary, recognizing that many of you have put in a lot of effort on this project over the last two years, and I want to respect the decisions that have been made already, or the discussions that have occurred. My brain loves spreadsheets, and it was.
Mine, too.
Very helpful for me to kind of just lay out what has been discussed, and where we are, whether or not it's a priority. So I was thinking, I'm going to make this for myself regardless of what you guys think, but I wanted to offer to complete this and keep it updated throughout our meetings, maybe plan to have it done a week ahead of time, or whenever you would need it to add to the packet.
This is basically a work plan.
Yeah.
And it gives us, like, actionable items to, to work from.
And I was so happy to see that Amy went and did a narrative version of all the meetings, because I was going to go back and watch all the meetings to see what's been discussed. So, yeah, if you guys like it, I can incorporate what you have in the narrative document to have it ready for the next meeting. And also, if you have any other, like, columns or information that you want to see or don't want to see, good with that, too.
The only thing I ask is that you identify in a footer that this is your document? I was a little confused, you know, juggling a lot of, you know, different things, especially looking online, but if you would, so that we can keep clear what's a, what's a city document. I thought, I thought this was a city document. It was like, oh, my gosh. But you did this.
I didn't want to ask you to do that.
Yeah, that's the only, right now, I don't want to take a closer look, and I think any comments that we might have should go through staff, and then to Alyssa that way, as opposed to violating some sort of open meeting law.
And it could definitely be like, I'll just update what happened at the meeting, not that you guys are sending me things that you're working on prior to a meeting occurring.
No, I'm, I'm happy with you sending the information to me, and then I can get that out to the full commission.
Okay. Right, so that's, we've done the GIs map and access to historic district.
On the GIs.
Mm-hmm. So any other, okay. So we've moved on to number two. You've heard our updates on this. Are there any comments from the public about this GIs work? So this is the website enhancement, really Amy's work, the GIs map is staff for historic district information.
Kathy Lishman, it seems like you're having a workshop, and I know there are people here for the next item, which is timely and shorter, I imagine, but it, it seems like this discussion could go on and on, and there's people waiting to speak to the next item. Let's just.
Thank you. Any other comments about the website development? So number three is considering the next steps for defining a working era of significance, 1860 to 1930. As I mentioned earlier, this is, comes from the direction from city council, and it's, you know, what is in our current inventory, at least what I was able to identify, or find on our website at that time. Let me, this was under the highest priority recommendation, number four from city council. Age of structure, comment, just because it is old does not mean it is historic. Then historic designation of the structure, we have, is it on a historic register? That's a formal acknowledgement, so we, you know, we do have some structures that are on the historic register, others are not. Consider a year to establish a cutoff for historic designation. In Cleve Morris's memo to us, it's parenthetical 1950 question mark, so I don't know what that, where that came from. So what do the rest of you think? When I, back in January, when I put this designation summary on here, that's what we had on our inventory. So what do you think about the 1950 date? Or any other date as far as that goes?
I'm disinclined to implement a hard date at this time, pending further fleshing out of this stuff.
And just keeping it limited to, you're in a historic district.
Within the physical boundary.
You're in the physical boundary of a historic district. Perhaps that can include going forward to incorporate ones that are on our inventories, but right now, I haven't had any of those come before me in the time that I've been here, that I can think of off the top of my head. So I'm disinclined to establish a hard date timeline, and more have it be if you're in the historic district, because that's what we're really talking about, historic district, then you will come before us for historic design review.
I, I agree with that. I think this is useful and good information, and I think it's the best we can do right now, too, without having more information. And so it seems like the next working steps would be having the comprehensive work plan, and then just continuing to develop the framework for applying the project review standards.
I appreciate this discussion, because I think it's become a larger discussion than what's been requested of city council, and my thought with the, going with the dates was more around just how we think of Plasterville, in the timeframe that we try to preserve, you know, the Gold Rush era, the Victorian stuff, not specifically when we think about the historic district. However, if we are really only focusing on the historic districts right now, I am totally okay with not moving forward on a.
On making a cutoff date.
Cut-off date, yeah.
Okay.
If we're just looking at what's existing in the historic district. But then when you start thinking about if people are trying to become, or get their house on some register, I think that's a different conversation.
Oh, good point. Until we have more of these, you know, context statements, we really don't know, we have, we have some historical, you know, comments of how these got created, a lot of allusions to, you know, the Gold Rush era, but again, there's a wide range, and I think we have to take it case by case. We're looking at maintaining the aesthetic of the whole district, and it, it doesn't end at a certain date. So I, I wasn't comfortable, I put the 1930s, I wasn't comfortable with the idea of going up to 1950 simply because we have an inventory at a house, and said, and you'll, you'll see this in other communities, maybe it was a particular architect who came in and designed a house, 1955, well, that's, you know, that's something we should think about preserving the aesthetic of, but we don't have that in our inventory, I don't know that we have them in any of our historic districts. So I'm in agreement with not establishing a cutoff year for historic designation. I think that's a, a case by case basis. You know, the comments on that date, cutoff date?
Just what Commissioner said earlier, the SOI standards apply to the historic districts, period. And so it doesn't, they're not applicable to the registry of those inventory properties, so that's a different subject. So there's no need for a cutoff.
Well, I think under, under city co, under the city ordinance, the SOI stand, because of the way the city ordinance is written, the SOI standards apply to the historic districts.
Right.
It sounded to me from our discussion that historically in the city, the planning commission has approved, has used the SOI standards for other historic listed buildings in the city, right? And if it's, if it's, okay, so I, so I'm trying to think if there's, because you'd still have to comply with, like, sequo, I mean, if, 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 well, this is a whole other discussion.
Wait for that project to come forward.
We do have a really time-sensitive agenda item on the next, as the next agenda.
Let me just offer an example that's come up as long as I can remember, on double pane windows. We have a standard now where we say, we only care if it faces the street. Why? The purpose of double-pane windows is to provide for greater heat efficiency. So why do we have that? And we have no standard regarding what kind of frames, because those double-pane windows are available in lots of different kinds of material, not merely vinyl. And it can be wood, and it can be shaped to look just like what they're replacing. So my suggestion before illustrating how a workshop works is you ask people, like we had two persons described appropriately as historic preservationists before us last time, you simply ask, what do you believe should be the standards? Should it include windows that don't face the street? And when it comes to decking, can it be material that's fireproof or fire-resistant if it looks like what it's to replace? Those are simple questions. I don't have an answer. But if you hear from the public, whatever we come up with is going to have much more credibility, because people are going to think we listened to them, we gave them more than three minutes. That's my thought.
Well, as we, when we develop this framework, I guess I, I guess my thought is, and maybe we'll flesh this out as the work plans being developed for how we'll move forward, but I'm kind of envisioning we prepare this framework, and then, and then what's the process? Does it then go to city council for their approval, or is it?
We would craft a memo to update city council on our decision, and then Ms. Kendrick would present that to city council, we would receive their approval, and so at this point, you know, the way this process has worked today, that's the way it's worked today. We took information, we summarized it, sent to city council, they gave us, you know, their direction. I want to complete the direction they've given us.
Yeah.
Give them an update, and then they'll advise us, you know.
And, and we could, and we could have a recommendation in this part of that memo is to open, is to have a workshop with.
Precisely.
On, on what we, the standards and framework that we've developed.
Once we've completed the task at hand, I think then we can say, we need more information. This is the time we need to, yeah.
And then at that point, there will be something for people to review and provide feedback on.
Uh-huh.
So I think there's an opportunity to work in the workshop in this process.
Yeah, oh, definitely in the process.
After a lot of this cleanup work has been done.
Right. So, yeah, I think we're, we're all in agreement on that work plan. So, yeah, we're, we're going to decline this working era of significance right now. That, that really comes into play, I think, when we get around to updating inventory. We, you know, have a, a statement of what we're looking for, work with a consultant, you know, what, what do you see, what, what should it be? It's really not our job to define that. The consultants know much, much better, and, and then we can do it at that time. So the number four is.
Number three?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to offer a public comment?
Thank you, thank you. So I'll put up to the public about number three, considering defining a working era of significance. So just, we're not inclined to define that at this time, anything outside of the existing inventory.
I concur. I don't think it's necessary. I think you just analyze each parcel and structure as it comes before you, and it'll have, there's, you know, post-war boom gems, there's, you know, 1960s Jetsons homes that we'll be losing here because they're updating them to stucco and no eaves. Each period has its own potential significance, and you always have to remember, if it's one of the last few survivors of that era of architecture. So I wasn't sure, is this an action item or just a general discussion?
We're, we're, yeah, this is our discussion item, and, yeah, we're, we just want to hear from the public now about this working era of significance.
I wasn't, couldn't tell if there was going to be a vote at the end, or what.
No, we're just taking comment. So it sounds like, you know, we definitely are in agreement with that. I'd like to see that Jetsons house that you talked about, but that's exactly why I was not inclined to move everything over to make it like a ministerial approval, because we have a real mix. And what, what I see our charge is protecting the district. In addition to each structure, we're also looking at protecting a district. Anyone else from the public like to comment on this working era of significance? Number four is evaluate requiring applicants to submit high-quality photos or samples of proposed materials for accurate review. Yep, absolutely. You know, that, we have been, well, we've asked that, and it just was so helpful when people came in with good brochures, or even, you know, pieces of the material that they're talking about, and they could show us, you know, compare, so that we don't have to go out to a field site to see it. So I, I'm absolutely in favor of that. Samples are best, high-quality photos second.
Agreed.
All right. Okay, yeah, public comment. We've gotten some public comment before, but, yeah, Mr. Drobisch, if you'd like to reiterate?
Yep, I completely concur. You, as individual planning commissioners, can say, I don't think this application is complete. I'm abstaining from the vote. And when enough of that happens, applicants will start to learn, you better show up and with your A or B game, otherwise it's come back next month.
Right. Mr. Drobisch has seen us in action. Mr. Drovish has seen us in action. If we can't get our, our questions answered, we really can't make an informed decision. So they do need to, to help us along. We can't write the, we have some standard language for findings and we're going to avoid the boilerplate because they have to bring to us, you know, materials so that we have confidence in the findings that we've put to paper. All right, anyone else? All right.
The last thing I'll say on this topic is the purpose of my timeline that I submitted was because I felt like we were getting a little, well, we have four new people up here since we've started these discussions. And so the reason I put the timeline together is so that everyone newer to the commission could understand where we started and where we've gone. And while that might've seemed like a long discussion, we have been discussing this for a half hour to an hour and a half at our meetings for the last three years. And so I think it's important that we continue to have this on the, on the agenda so that we can touch on these topics each meeting rather than focusing on one workshop. That was almost an hour, I think, of us just talking about that. So having one workshop on everything that we need to tackle. And if you read this timeline, you'll see there's been weaving and guiding and finding our way. So I would like to keep going like this, having this be agendized. If we have stuff to submit, submit it to Carol so that the rest of people can review. So for example, for the next one, I would like to bring, time, time willing to, if we have a ton of public hearings and we cannot fit in this discussion, we can postpone it, which is what we've done in the past. But time willing, be able to touch on these and move some of this progress forward rather than having ongoing conversations or going backwards in our conversations to, to really move some action items forward.
And I would, I would ask too, if maybe if there's multiple items under this particular agenda item, that this is at the bottom.
I was thinking the same thing, Commissioners Sylvester.
All right. So we will continue to have this as a standing or ongoing agenda item so we can keep this moving. I appreciate everyone's comments and patience as we work through this, as Amy alluded to, we've talked about this. And that's, that was why I felt it was important to break this into workable pieces as were described on the summary memo for this item. So I feel like, you know, we've had some fruitful discussions and we're very close to, you know, making some more progress on this. Ms. Kendrick, is this something, as far as our next items, we, we need to finalize these proposed standard findings? And do you, do you want us to just submit to you information we'd like to have included? And perhaps then as time allows, we can take on maybe two or three more items to address? I want to focus on addressing the direction from City Council, so.
That, that would be absolutely fine with me, so.
Okay. Great. All right, our final item is 12.2.2, the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, guideline development for local governments to navigate financial regulatory and market challenges. I'll turn this over to you, Ms. Kendrick, for a summary.
Yes, I was asked by Commissioner Sylvester to add this item to the agenda. And so, let's see. Get my notes here. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This is an initiative that was developed with urban planning expert Bill Fulton at UC San Diego, which aims to support California communities in reviving their downtowns and main streets. It addresses post-pandemic recovery, climate adaption, and economic challenges by providing tools, case studies, and strategies to create inclusive, resilient, and vibrant downtowns. This aligns with Placerville's identity as a welcoming, active, and business-friendly rural foothill community built on California's rich Gold Rush history. The LCI held a statewide listening session on August 7th, 2025, attended by three of our commissioners, two of our peak members, which one is here, and residents and merchants in the area. The session explored key questions from LCI, including what are the biggest financial and regulatory barriers to the downtown revitalization? How can communities balance economic growth with climate resilience? What strategies have worked locally to enhance inclusivity and vibrancy? And so there were breakout groups as part of this talking session and lots of lively discussion. What LCI is asking for is any comments that we can provide to help them in their development of these guidelines. They are asking for those by August 28th at 5:00 PM. And so based on Commissioner Sylvester's recommendation and bringing it forward to the Planning Commission to see if you have any comments or suggestions that you'd like me to combine and provide to LCI prior to next Thursday. The City Council will also be seeing this item on their meeting next Tuesday. We also did provide you with a document that was provided by our peak member Kathy Lishman. It's the March 1996 Downtown Revitalization Action Plan that focuses on preserving our historic can, historic character, enhancing pedestrian accessibility, and supporting small businesses while promoting sustainable tourism. Staff request that the commission discuss this initiative tonight and provide comments or recommendations for submission to LCI. Your input could shape state guidelines to reflect Placerville's goals such as supporting local merchants, improving infrastructure, and ensuring climate resilience. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. Those of you who attended, I'm going to let you lead this discussion. That was Catherine and Alyssa and Kurt. Right? Did you attend?
I did not.
And Ms. Lishman, you were also in attendance, okay.
I can always talk, but I would love to hear from the public first.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the reason that I was interested in bringing it to this meeting was just because, well, because I, I'm, I am still learning what some of the challenges of the city are. And I thought it'd be a great opportunity to have this discussion and then, and then also to provide input on this workshop. They're in the, or this committee, they're in their very beginning stages right now. So they're really looking for, for some input.
Great. So what did, what struck you as far as what's happening, maybe, or what is it that they see as a barrier? There were some questions that, Ms. Kendrick, you circulated by email. Barriers in planning encountered in maintaining a thriving downtown? Strategies implemented to address that and support that this organization, LCI, or state body can give? You know, from my perspective, and at this point, I want to thank Kathy Lishman for providing that document from 1996. I saw the date on that and I thought, well, you know, boy, that's, that's been around. And, but I read it, I found it so interesting and there were so many great ideas in there, some things that are still apt, some, a lot of work has been done that came out of, of that, that whole, the charrette and the designs from the consultant and so on. So I thank you very much for providing that for our review. And I remember, anyway, I remember doing a survey with you, must've been in 95 or 96 in downtown, so here it comes back around. So, right, what, what can we provide to Ms. Kendrick as far as?
I guess I'm, I'm happy to see that most of our members of the public that came, I think we're here for this discussion.
You don't want to, okay.
So, I mean, so.
You'd prefer to take public comment or?
I think I'd like to, I mean, I can share with you what, what we discussed in our breakout session. I, I think that, and then maybe Commissioner started of your.
I unfortunately had to step away pretty early in the webinar, so.
Because what, what was evident to me from our breakout session was that a lot of people, a lot of the, the attendees were still kind of grappling with, you know, how they were going to respond to this request. So that was where it seemed like having the, the follow-up discussion was so important. So our group, there was a lot of discussion about the, like, really opportunities for funding, like historic restoration, building facades. They talked about a grant that's available for, for that. So Commissioner Smith, do you have anything to add? We were in the same breakout session.
Here are the views that I was going to provide for my comments. Often federal and state legislators produce regulations and grants and all kinds of things for communities that are oriented towards where those legislators are, big urban areas. And they come up with cookie cutter answers that don't fit small historic communities. And I'll give you two examples. One is outside the city. It's the old Skinner Winery in Rescue. This is one of the first wineries and distilleries in the area. It's crumbling. They went to the Planning Commission for the county to make revisions and all kinds of regulations were imposed on them. Special conditions that came about because they met urban needs like bicycle lanes and so many spots for parking in a rural historic district way over there in the 1800s. So the bottom line was they couldn't do it. That historic structure is going to continue to crumble. So that's example number one. Example number two would be the Streetscape Plan that came up with many years ago that included a roundabout up at the end of the street where the Druid's Monument is. In order to get federal money for that project, it had to be a roundabout. And whether that's good or bad, people can debate it, but the idea is locally, people didn't want it, evidenced by a number of things, including Measure K Passage. But that was a standard imposed by legislators who were, again, from large urban densely populated areas who don't understand historic needs. So the proposal that I would.
You're saying that design requirements linked to the funding opportunities are an impediment?
They're too rigid. They need to have flexibility for historic small towns. They need to be able to make modifications. For example, when it came to repaving Main Street after we dug it up because of, you know, old water pipes that were rusting away, it, it meant that we were required to come in and add ball belts and different kinds of sidewalks and things like that to change the look. If you go next door to Plymouth and Grass Valley, you'll find an entirely different look. So here we are, the third largest town during the Gold Rush, and we have a modern look compared to the other communities of the Mother Lode. It doesn't mean that we couldn't come up with accommodations for people who, who had impediments for movement, but it didn't have to be quite as strict. There could have been modifications. But again, those standards imposed by legislators from densely populated urban areas become with cookie cutter solutions that may make sense for someplace else, it does not make sense for Placerville. So the suggestion was simply that, that their standards include exceptions and modifications, some flexibility for small areas, that there be a, now, do I have language for that? No, but that's the concept.
Just to clarify though, this, these are not standards being developed. It's just guidelines and the intent is to help communities revitalize their downtown. So everything associated with that. So, but I think we could definitely ask for, for guidelines, you know, that specifically address small rural historic communities.
So like technical assistance on how rural communities could implement within?
Yeah, so they, so.
Requirements?
So some examples that they gave were like how to develop like an economic, an economic revitalization plan for your downtown. Or how to get funding to, you know, take care of some of the revitalization efforts, things like that. So, is there anything else?
Here, here's one that would be up that track. Downtown business needs parking. It's not like the way it used to be when Mrs. Leone could come in on her buckboard from El Dorado, you know, up at Grizzly Flats and stay overnight as she gets provisions. It's changed. We used to have about 10 grocery stores when I was a kid on Main Street. That's changed. But now you still need parking downtown. We don't have it. So a few years ago, when I had access to property on, on Reservoir Street, I offered it to the city, free. You could have that property, and I talked to a number of owners of property all along Reservoir Street. You could level it off to the level of Main Street, excavate. I even found locations where you could, because the biggest cost in excavation is where are you going to put the dirt? Where are you going to put what you remove? So I found places. And their only structure back there was some residential property and she was prepared to sell her property at cost. The problem was when I approached Cleve to make him that offer, it's free, was there's no grant money to accommodate parking.
You could come up with. The grading necessary to make it, yeah.
Yeah, so how are you going to pay for that? So you get money that'll allow you to move the Druid's Monument, put in a, a roundabout, but you don't have money for an historic district to develop parking. And, and they're right now, I'm sure they've got right now some locations for, you know, first responders center. But for a while, they were looking for a place for the police department, fire department. You, you could have gotten it possibly back there where you would have had access to Bedford Avenue and Highway 50. But in any event, there was no grant money for parking. And so that kind of money is needed for urban, for rural areas, historic communities, to be able to do development. That's, again, not the kind of answer that would be appropriate for a big city, but is for us. We need parking downtown.
Okay. We have some members of the public, some, I don't know how many of you attended the LCI workshop, but if you have any comments about that? And even if you didn't, you know, what we're talking about here are this group is looking for solutions to barriers in planning encountered, I can't, encountered in maintaining a thriving downtown. Any strategies that you know of that have been implemented to address that? And any support that this land use and climate innovation office from the, the Governor's Office could give? So anybody like to comment on that? And this is all really for Ms. Kendrick's benefit. She's going to take these comments and add them and present them to the City Council because LCI wants a response from the city. So we're just kind of laying some groundwork tonight.
Kathy Lishman again, and they want response from individuals too. And I think it's very unclear about what we could say that would be good, that would be helpful. The Downtown Revitalization Plan was wonderful because it was community-driven and it was managed by consultants that are experts in the field. And there are things in there that are still appropriate. The background, it says, the purpose of the Downtown Placerville Revitalization Action Plan is to provide a framework of actions toward revitalizing downtown's, downtown's economy. This is the kind of things that they're looking for. Revitalizing downtown's economy, preserving and enhancing its historic heritage, and ensuring its vitality as the communities center. And the thing is, they're not asking us to tell them where we could use money to do some of these things. And it's hard to say what they, if it's just guidelines, I think this has a lot of good points. This also says, for downtown Placerville, its greatest challenge was the construction of Highway 50 and the resulting bypassing of Main Street. It's okay that all the traffic doesn't come down Main. It's okay that all the traffic doesn't come down Main Street, but that Caltrans really actually is part of the problem that Placerville has. "As a result of the enthusiasm for this project, the downtown business owners and the downtown property owners voted to assess themselves to make some improvements." So the streetlights, there were benches, there were trashcans, and it's kind of a sore subject now, that were recommended. Then we worked with Caltrans to do things like the bridge railings and the, on Highway 50, that it looks better than it used to look. But they also recommended things like, so they, let's see. Sorry, it's kind of hard to, because I don't really know what they want. But one of the points that they said is, "Placerville is invisible from Highway 50." And we've done a few things to try to make that look good, but there were other things in the plan, too. The downtown edge, they said, was important. Looking at the back of the buildings is not exactly inviting in a lot of cases, although it really looks cute to me. But the welcome sign was one thing that was mentioned as being great. Well, Caltrans is probably going to put a pedestrian overcrossing there, and who knows what's going to happen to the welcome sign. So a lot of our issues really are related to Caltrans. There was a nice garden before you got to Kentucky Fried Chicken, and there was an off-ramp there. They took that away, and they took that garden away. On the west of Placerville, as you come into town, with the park and ride and the off-ramp or on-ramp, it's ugly. Landscaping, beautification is what communities need, but there needs to be money to do that. On top of that all, Trip to Green, it makes it difficult. And that's the city's project with the Transportation Commission, with Caltrans. But it's hard for people, people just want to zoom through. And so they need to make communities inviting. They need to, it needs to honor communities for what they have authentically. Public art is something that needs to be involved with it. Landscaping, for us, there was a proposal to plant crabapple trees along Highway 50 corridor. The city never got to that project. That, they have three seasons. They have blossoms, they have leaves, and in the fall, they have beautiful color. They suggested cross-street banners, the three areas, Spring Street, Canal, and Bedford, to have those posts up where there's a banner across it that welcomes people to Placerville. So things that can welcome people to a community could be part of it. Anyway, the goal, the goal should be to help Placerville put its best foot forward. What can they do? It's important to enhance and preserve the local character, the historical and the environment, to take things the way they are and not change them, but the things that the community values to really accent them. So I don't know what to say because they're not asking where the money could be spent. Oh, something else I wanted to say, the high priority actions could be something. Institute needed funding mechanisms for capital improvements, business incentive programs, policy changes, and ongoing operations and maintenance. Construct the catalyst project, number one, the downtown highway edge improvements. That's along Highway 50. Establish and fund incentive programs to stimulate near-term investment in downtown. At a minimum, these should include a business recruitment and relocation program and a facade improvement program. Well, those could be things that they suggest, but like I said, there needs to be money in order to do any of these things. And good luck making our comments to the state.
Thank you.
I have a question about the plan. It mentioned a business relocation program. Is anyone-
Yeah, I saw that.
In this plan, the revitalization strategy.
Yeah.
Is anybody familiar with that and what it was and if it-
I don't know that it's been put into play.
Okay.
I don't know.
Because if I, if I recall, the purpose of it was to help move businesses into the downtown, to help to foster, like, small local businesses.
Revitalize them, okay. Anyone else like to comment on what impediments there are to revitalizing the downtown?
Or any challenges that you see in the downtown?
Yeah, state of California government, the biggest impediment that needs to be removed. And their unfunded mandates and telling us how to design and build and plan local cities. That is the single greatest impediment to success for a city like Placerville, is the state of California government. So I don't know exactly what this is. I was looking for a video link or something, but if it's coming from the state, it's bad. If it includes the term "climate resiliency," it's dangerous. It sounds like it's just going to be guidelines, but I would expect in five years, it becomes mandatory, that it would become mandatory standards. So anyway, there's no hope for this state. Removing the barriers, already addressed. One of them, just thinking of actual things that'll never happen, is the restrictions on us clearing the creek bed of trees and brush. That one trapped trash, blocked views, can create flooding problems. State of California is never going to let us get in those creek beds and clean them out for public safety. I would say ban using tree banks. So when the city does a project, or somebody does a project big enough, they pay money to mitigate cutting down a bunch of trees. And that money goes to some corporation somewhere instead of planting trees here. And it's just an easy way out. And I would like to see banning the city using tree banks and actually replant trees here on projects. Yep, so they're asking for guidelines for now, but I bet they become mandatory down the road.
Anyone else like to talk about barriers to maintaining our downtown? Hi.
Hi.
Good evening.
Alan Ming, I'm part of the Merchants on Main Board, one of the board members. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend the Zoom meeting. And so I think, like others, I'm still trying to kind of wrap my head around exactly what the state's looking for and what their output's going to be from the feedback that they get. But our organization, you know, we're really trying to focus on, obviously, revitalization of downtown. It's been, it's been a struggle. We've just been open a couple of years, but talking to a lot of the business owners, they're saying business is definitely way down. I think with small Main Streets anymore, we can't compete with big box. You can't compete with online. So, you know, I see these small historical downtowns having to really lean into the history and getting support. And I hate to use the word tourist destination, but really leaning into that history and also making them community centers. So it can't be one or the other. We can't rely solely on the community to stay in business and be successful, and we can't rely solely on tourism to remain successful. Especially here, tourism is very seasonal. It's not a destination. There's not a lot of hospitality. So the other eight, nine months out of the year, we have to rely on the local community. So ways to, you know, have more community-type events. I know Main Street is unique. It's a thoroughfare. It's not an offshoot. And so there's a lot of, you know, not just financial barriers, but traffic barriers for locals and being, you know, how they use Main Street. I would almost guarantee the majority of traffic on Main Street is people passing through. They're not down there to shop and hang out on Main Street. They're using it as a thoroughfare. So, you know, those are definitely, I think, some of the challenges that Main Street deals with. The Trip to Green, I'm learning more about it, unfortunately. I don't think that's favorable for businesses, although I do understand, you know, the concept behind it. And then just the overall aesthetics, beautification, and maintenance of a historical district is probably kind of on another level than it is with a lot of other business districts around town and kind of requiring that higher level of attention and maintenance. And nobody wants homeless, but I think it kind of, you know, when this is where your tourists are coming in and you're dealing with the infamous dog poop on the sidewalks or the homeless and things like that. But again, like Kathy said, this all takes money, and we definitely understand that. So without this, you know, the city, or the state guidelines coming back with opportunities for grants and fundings to achieve some of the guidelines that they're putting forward, I don't know how much benefit there's going to be in the output of their program. But my two cents. And we'd really love to work with you guys on, you know, aside from the guidelines, on some ideas and improvements we have for Main Street beautification, informational kiosk boards and things like that. So I know that's time for another discussion, but maybe-
Look forward to hearing about that, too. And I want to thank you for your comments. I hate to put more work on you, but if you could possibly summarize it and have it come from your organization, you know, in addition to individual public comments, when, I think, when they see something where the merchants have all signed on, it carries a lot of weight. And, you know, you have a lot of really valid concerns, and I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Hundred percent, we are planning on doing that.
Oh, great, great. Anyone else like to speak to this? Before we close it, I just, I don't know, do the rest of you have any more comments based on what we heard? I think we're hearing funding-
I wanted to say-
And flexibility on this funding, so that's-
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you as well for sending the PDF of the revitalization strategy because I don't know that I'd seen it before, and if I had it, it's been a minute. So I read through it, and like you said, a lot of progress has been made. One of the ones that really stuck out to me was the, as you mentioned, the signs along 50 and the kind of disparate look and everything like that. And I think that that is something that we could look at to give a fresh look along Highway Corridor 50. I know this isn't totally relevant to this, but on topic, it would be interesting to discuss that as like an idea to make it look like there's a little bit of cohesion and some updating going on in town that might redraw people into Main Street to see what's going on. Not that anything in the front would change or any of the stores. It's not necessarily that, but to just incorporate this idea of a kind of facelift for us and, you know, the different tree ideas and things like that. I think we're really helpful to hear. And that's kind of my view.
I did want to ask, how, what's your deadline for receiving comments in order to incorporate them into the?
They're due by next Thursday at 5:00 PM, so, you know, as soon as you can. But I would say no lighter than next Wednesday at 5:00 PM because I do need to compile them. And I know city councils, they're going to have short notice. Hopefully, some are watching.
Perfect.
I would like to provide them with whatever we can.
Mm-hmm. And then I just had two thoughts coming out of all of your great public comment. I was thinking back to the last few years where we've had the stoplights stay green. Is that, yeah, I don't know any of the results of that, but it would be lovely to know how that impacts rural communities, if it's effective or if it's hurting merchants. So that could be something that, it's applicable statewide.
I think the city council listed on that, so that's a good point.
Yeah, great, that's awesome. And then also, kind of the concept of weatherproofing Main Street in that I know businesses lose a lot of customers when the weather is poor. And we do have cold and rainy weather a good amount of the year. So it would be interesting to hear what some of their cities have done to invite people to still engage when the weather's poor.
Great, great ideas. You know, for my part, I've heard some comments about the design guidelines. And the way I see the bulbous when the water sewer line work was done in Main Street, I like that look. I think they did an excellent job of integrating it. I think it blends well with the character defining features of our downtown. It provides a lot of pedestrian safety. And, you know, we've been cautioned against guidelines becoming standards. Some of these standards are actually good. And so pedestrian safety is important if you want people to be in your downtown, spending time, feeling like they can get across the street as both a bicyclist and a pedestrian, a bicyclist, a driver. But people take a lot of risks. So things that improve pedestrian safety are good. And bicycle lanes are helpful of, it, there's, perhaps, you know, you aren't a bicyclist yourself. I bicycle occasionally, and it's definitely becoming more and more popular. So these are things that aren't necessarily bad. But we do need to have some flexibility in how these things are applied. And I think our city engineers have done an excellent job taking those requirements, getting grant money to do necessary updates, and then doing things that update overall safety on our roads. So that's my opinion. Since we got some pushback from the public tonight, I just felt like it was important for, I want city council to know and to hear from me that, you know, there are those of us who think that we've done a really good job with these improvements. And, you know, Kirk Smith said, having stringent requirements to get money. Well, the state needs to hear that there is flexibility, but I don't want to throw all of those design guidelines and those recommendations out. Flexibility, yes, but there's, there have got to be good ways for us to implement that. And perhaps that's something that LCI can do, is work with designers, engineers on, you know, sizing things, the design, the colors that are both catch the attention of the drivers and pedestrians and bicyclists, but maybe don't look the exact same as what you might have in a larger city. So I just wanted, I felt like I needed to put that down there. I think, as I said, I think the city's done a very good job with implementing those design requirements. I think everybody, we agree, funding is so important and drawing more tourists into our downtown. And hopefully then, actually, the way I see it, when I first saw this workshop, you know, we just, we need to get businesspeople who love our community. The city, I don't think the city impedes revitalization. I'm not sure that the state impedes the, you know, maintaining our downtowns, but we're, the city of Placerville is not, neither one is responsible for actually procuring a building and putting in a business. You know, we need to have, and I'm not sure what can be done about that. I know our Economic Advisory Committee is working on that. You know, that's their job, but I'm not sure what it is we need from the state of California to get those businesspeople in, get them interested in Placerville, and plug in those shops that we want, shops that serve us locals as well as are attractive to tourists. Something that I saw in the comments from the public in the revitalization from 1996. People, "Well, I want a grocery. I want to be able to buy this downtown." And, you know, some of that, some of those things still are valid today. But again, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not a business owner. I don't know what it is that we need to do to attract them. But what we need to do is find out what it is that we're doing that we're stopping them, you know, and make it more attractive. So I don't know if anybody has anything else to say. I know the hour is late. Again, I appreciate everybody's patience, comments.
I guess I could offer you some clarification. I do have a bicycle as well, and I favor bicycle routes. You have a different area up in Broadway. They just added new bicycle routes. And for coming down Main Street, you can go off the side. We have routes. coming down Main Street, you can go off the side, we have routes. But Main Street was made for horses and carriage, and there's a number of areas where it's very dangerous to open your car door. Can you imagine an extra lane? So I'm just talking about flexibility, not ironclad rules. And a roundabout could be the best thing since sliced bread, but for that particular area, the public didn't favor it statistically. So it's only talking about flexibility, not a cookie cutter solution for all properties, that's all.
Okay, the, it is 9:31, and we stand adjourned until the 2nd of September.